To get translation. We are heading into our, excuse me for one second. Put myself on mute. Okay, sorry about that. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we're here to listen to any public comment there might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for a public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we are discussing tonight. We will be discussing public employee discipline dismissal, release and complaint. Student discipline, liability claims, conference with labor negotiators. And conference with labor negotiators. Staff, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much, everyone. We will reconvene for open session at six thirty tonight. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are going to extend our closed session until six forty-five. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. Thank you. Evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. The public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to staff, they are placed in the order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda. Items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have ten minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act. Board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move on to our opening procedures. First, we will have the pledge of allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, C O Johnson. We are now moving to the land, labor and body acknowledgement. We have a video. Thank you very much to Pinot Valley High School. We are now moving on to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burdens of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge that the continued contribution of labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced and undocumented peoples in what? In the building of what we refer to as the United States. We are now moving to item B four, the West Contra Costa Unified School District. School Board's anti racism statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti racism. The conscious and active effort to identify, challenge and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism explicit or implicit stands in direct conflict. To the fundamental principles of West Contra Costa Unified School District education. To carry W C C U S D education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism. And develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning. To deepen our understanding and our examination of racism and oppression and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings. Fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti racist learning environment where each student. Staff member and community partner is respected and valued member of W C C U S D community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas. And inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti racist policies, programs and practices for our children's education and well being. While building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students and community to living these standards of anti racism in our schools. C E O Johnson, will you please do roll call?
President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Christian.
Uh, good evening, present.
Trustee Phillips.
Here.
Student trustees Abdaka Parov.
Good evening, present.
Student trustee Parkar.
Good evening, present.
Everyone is present.
Thank you so much, C E O Johnson. We are now moving to report and ratification of closed session. Do we have anything to report out?
Yes, we have two items to report out. In closed session, the board took action to terminate certificated employee. One, one, two, four, five, seven. For failure to request a hearing following receipt of a statement of charges. That there, there exists cause to immediately suspend without pay. And to dismiss, dismiss a permanent certificated employee. And directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was Christian. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. And trustee Phillips, absent. The next item is A point, two point two. There was no report out. And then regarding agenda item A two point three. The board voted to reject claim number six, three, six, six, five, oh, related to alleged personal injury. The roll call vote was as follows. Chris, trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. And trustee Phillips, absent. And that concludes the report out.
Thank you very much, C E O Johnson. We are now moving to agenda item. B seven. We are moving to public comment. I'm going to read one more time how to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherized on the agenda. And is related to issues affecting public education and W C C U S D. Public comment will last approximately sixty minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a W C C U S D public comment form. Or participating via Zoom, individuals need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Individuals need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. We are now starting public comment. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have public comment for tonight?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Rosalinda Peñate.
Hold on Fran, push that little button. It has a face of a person. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening all. Buenas tardes a todos. My name is Rosalinda Peñate. I am the parent of a kindergarten student in the D L I program at Stewart School. Before I continue, I want to thank you all for approving and proclaiming the month of April as the National Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month. It's important to bring attention to the benefits of learning more than one language. I am here tonight to do exactly that. To advocate for the continuation of the D L I program at Stewart School. And to bring attention to the issue that someone in leadership, someone in a very important decision making role. Made the decision to phase out our D L I program at Stewart School. Without family engagement or to my knowledge, public participation or input. This decision has significant. Significant implications on my family. I have a preschooler who I am uncertain if he'll be able to attend the D L I program. At Stewart, as we had already planned to. Further, I have a kindergartner whose future is also uncertain in the D L I program at Stewart. I am here tonight with my two very young children. Asking you all to support our program. So that I can continue for the year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And to place emphasis not only on a short term plan, but on a long term plan so that we can ensure the successful. So, so that we can ensure the success and. And ensure that we have a sustainable D L I program at Stewart. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinstler. Please unmute yourself.
Good morning, board. I'm here tonight to advocate for my school, my community and my parents. Being a lowland school, our community needs to be remembered and please think about the disadvantages we face. Having any kids in grades one through three in combo classes is a real challenge and it's difficult for our students. They now have thirty minutes to learn their math that normally gives them sixty minutes because the teacher's juggling two grades. We traditionally have two classes of each grade from TK through third. And one class for each grade for four through eight because we're a TK eight at our school. Having students placed into a combo class for grades one through three is very difficult for the students. And for the brand new teachers, the T F A teachers, the Teach Start teachers, or even credential teachers who are all working at the same time to earn their credentials. Please think about our allowed full time teacher allotment. To make sure that every effort to look at the numbers during the first three weeks of school and not just right now for next year. Please be transparent with the numbers of students needed. Three through eight class. In our school last year, for the first month of school from eight fifteen to nine fifteen, we had thirteen TKs, a class by itself. We had twenty, thirty-seven kindergartens, an eighteen and a nineteen class by itself. We had thirty-eight first grades, a nineteen and a nineteen class by itself. And we had thirty-eight second grades, a nineteen and a nineteen class by itself. We were strongly encouraged to take after students. Students were displaced. We ended up with a one-two combo. Which really is disadvantaging to our students. Please, please look at our numbers again each year. Please try not to have combos at the younger age. It's really difficult for our students. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amanda Foster.
Good evening, school board and all here in person and on Zoom. My name is Amanda Foster and I am speaking again on behalf of Vista Virtual. Three Vista Virtual High School teachers are cut from our school. They have been offered jobs in physical classrooms here in West Contra Costa Unified. The district knows where these teachers live, three hundred and fifty to four hundred miles out of commuting range. First off, that's a big ask telling these teachers to pick an in-person placement, knowing it would require them to move themselves and their families here. Second, this decision negatively impacts currently enrolled students who will lose their beloved and talented teachers, whether those teachers choose to uproot their lives for a physical classroom space here. Or choose to take another opportunity. While far physically, these teachers are closely connected to the students and families they serve, as evidenced by previous school board meetings. Independent studies is a path to college and career. It is an actual, no hyperbole lifeline for our most vulnerable students. Please remember your actions have a direct and actual impact on student learning and mental health. This decision negatively impacts colleagues as well, who will be reorganized into new positions and who will miss the expertise these teachers bring. This decision makes our school smaller with fewer spaces for students and continues the patterns of cuts to Vista Virtual. Please consider supporting our school instead of undermining it. I know budget is at the crux of this decision. This school can be a revenue generator. Students and families around the Bay Area and the state want this opportunity. We should be inviting those students in. We can be the alternative education resource families need and bring money into this district if given the chance. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is mom of Vista Virtual Academy. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, esteemed school board members, as a parent, I've been the, I've seen the profound impact of Vista Virtual Academy. My child reading two grades ahead and tackling algebra at seven years old embodies his success. Miss Calora, second grade class achieved a year's growth in reading in just six months, even for those starting below grade. Vista Virtual is bridging the education equity gap. Retaining our teachers is crucial. Eliminating three high school teachers would disrupt the progress and require. And reallocating of resources. I urge you to seize this moment, man. Let's support Vista Virtual's mission to empower students and revolutionize education. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Our next public comment is. Jek, Jekseiv, Jackson, Morgia.
Hi, if I can all please have your attention because I know there's a lot of other things going on. I'm Haksibe Murghia and my daughter Talia attends kindergarten at the D L I program at Stewart Elementary. My daughter was transferred from Lupine Elementary specifically for the D L I program, which has been amazing. The D L I program is not offered at many schools in the area, so closing this program would be a big disservice to the community. My daughter is flourishing in the program. I see her so proud to speak another language. Stewart is a community based school, so we were taken by surprise when we were recently notified. That a decision was made to phase out the program and major changes would be happening to the current classes without clarity. The community did not get a chance to be involved. We don't fear there was transparency and there was a lack of communication. We want to know who made this decision and when and why this decision was made. There are many studies that show how beneficial it is to have a second language. And Stewart offers it all the way until the eighth grade, which is so amazing. But ending the middle school programming without notice closes paths to seal of by liberty. We need answers. Is this a temporary change or is this a permanent change? We need a chance to keep this program going. We have collected over five hundred signatures from the community of people that do not want to see this program phased out. I've spoken to so many proud families that have had children graduate from the dual language program and they all say how great it was and speak of the benefits. We want more families to continue to experience the same thing. I'm originally from San Francisco and learned of the dual language program from my nieces who graduated from the same program. And speak fluent Spanish. In San Francisco, the program is offered in many schools, but unfortunately our area, there is not as many options. So having this program at Stewart, Stewart is a value. And gives families with different needs an option and I feel that will strengthen enrollment. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kenya Cervantes. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, I'm here asking you to reconsider the cuts that you're once again making to Vista Virtual Academy. This cut directly impact seventy-five currently enrolled students who work with the three teachers. It then impacts the rest of our kids who will not have access. To experienced teachers and subject matter experts. Because they'll be losing their elementary or middle school teachers to fill in the gaps. Vista Virtual is constantly having to restructure and reorganize. And it's not right nor equitable for the students. My soon to be sixth grader has been with Vista since third grade. They came from your brick and mortar school, having been bullied by both students and adults at their school site. You are cutting a safety net for vulnerable youth. Independent study is invaluable for neurodivergent students and kids who don't thrive in your usual classrooms. My own child is able to do work that is several gray levels above their own, at their own pace in a safe environment. Continually cutting funds from Vista puts our students at a disadvantage. Just look at your data and reconsider the cuts. Your Vista students are among the happiest in this district. Do right by them. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Carissa Provenza.
Good evening, board. My name is Carissa Provenza. I'm a lawyer with public advocates. Sorry. And on January thirty-first, we filed Williams complaints to address the teacher vacancies at Stige Elementary, Holmes Middle School and Kennedy High. I'm here tonight in response to the letters we received from the district on April tenth regarding our complaints. The district has a mandatory duty to remedy these vacancies and we and our clients are entitled to a response that at a minimum. Sets forth a plan to fill each position with a lawfully assigned teacher. Unfortunately, the district's response did not detail a plan or even attempt to remedy the vacancies in our complaints. It, it instead demonstrated a decision to leave the unlawful vacancies in place. While hundreds of students wrap up their school year without the stability of a permanent properly certified teacher. The fact that the educator shortage is a statewide issue does not relieve West Contra Costa or any other district from its duty to assign. Each class a permanent fully credential teacher. As acknowledged in the district's response, the practice of using long-term substitutes or day-to-day substitutes to cover these teacher vacancies is illegal. This unsustainable practice also contributes to an unhealthy work and learning environment that leads to more vacancies. As stated in our appeal to the board sent on April eighteenth, we expect a corrected response no later than April twenty-ninth. Which presents a targeted plan for addressing each vacancy in our complaint. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jaskarat Kar. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Katia Arrasate.
Hello. My name is Katia and I'm part of the D L I PAC committee representing Stewart K three. I spoke up last year when we did not have teachers at our school. This year, we were fortunate to have teacher staff for D L I that we didn't have last year. Unfortunately, this past week, we were informed that D L I will be phasing out starting next year with Kinder. I have a son currently in the second grade that's in the program and my youngest would have been Kinder the following year. Now because of whoever decision this is, my child will either attend a different school. Or they will both have to be attending a different school at the same time. And this is not only for my family, but of multiple families that have younger siblings that would have been Kinder D L I. My biggest issue is that we had no type of communication or transparency about this happening. This, this phase out is very unfortunate. This makes the decision. The, the fact that the decision was made after the transfer process makes it harder for us too. I joined the D L I PAC because I believed we were trying to be a better D L I community as a whole for our district. So now it feels like our kids won't benefit from that D L I PAC that we try to do for our whole community because of the phase out. I understand budget cuts happening and some schools being underpopulated. But giving news after the transfer towards us is really just saddening. It doesn't give families a chance to even try and figure out what to do at the end of the year. I started a petition and as of today, at five P M, I printed it out that it was six hundred and seven signatures. I just checked again and now it's six hundred eighteen. The high numbers show that it's not just our community. Our school alone is about four hundred kids. So this signature represents more than just our community. It's our surrounding schools and it's our families trying to keep D L I. I printed the list and I could give it to you guys to show the list of people that have the signatures. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Daisy S. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Sandra Soto.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Soto. I have two kids at Stewart Elementary. Sorry, it's just very emotional. Because we were taken by surprise that um, the D L I would be phasing out. Like I said, I have two kids, one in kindergarten and another in first grade. And I've seen my kids thriving in the program and it's really great for them. And it's just really a concerning for myself and all the parents here that, that are here today because we want this program to continue. It's not only knowing a second language, but it's learning about different cultures. And um, is really something special for them to have. And also I just think it's really a dishonor that we will be doing for our kids if there is no Kinder and we're phasing out and then also my, my first grader that we'd be going into second grade. They will be now having to do a combo. And I just think that's very unfair for them because since the beginning of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, when they first started kindergarten, they didn't have a teacher. They found a teacher and then they were all split up. I know these kids do not like it when they're split up because I hear them. I volunteer at school pretty often and I see when there's sad faces that they don't want to get split up. So this has caused them some mental anxiety and they just say, we don't want to get split up. We want to stay together. So I just please urge you, I know there's been budget cuts, but please just find it somewhere in your hearts to do this for the kids because they are our future. And we just want this program to continue out for the next generation. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Sandeep Suraj Bonsi. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Sandeep Suraj Bonsi. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Board members. My name is Sandeep Suraj Bonsi, and I'm a Vista High School parent. I'm here for the third time in a row to reiterate to the board that we need to keep our Vista High School teachers. These teachers are high-value resources that our students are blessed with having. They push these children to levels they didn't even know they were attainable or just didn't even have the confidence to reach. They are our confidence coaches, and they work directly with families to help these children thrive. I would like the board to understand that removing these teachers who know how to navigate the virtual teaching setting and are credentialed subject matter experts would be a major disservice to our children and to our community as well as the other grade levels in the virtual schools because it would cause a reorganization. And just like another school had just given you data on how difficult it is with having a teacher teaching multiple children and having to split the time between those children, it is so hard on the teacher's side. And I feel for the teachers in this because they are already spending so much time with our children. And these three teachers that you're thinking about removing from this school because of budget cuts, they do a lot for these kids. And it's just really unfair, and it's really sad that this school is consistently being picked on. I want the board to understand that this is a very important and very impacting decision you're making. Please make the right one, and please keep these teachers on staff. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Our next public comment is Rosario Ramirez.
Eh, mi nombre es Rosario Ramirez. Estoy aquí representando a la escuela Stewart. Estoy aquí eh teniendo una experiencia con familiares que simplemente eh metimos eh los niños en la escuela donde no hay un programa como la que tiene Stewart. Y después, como padres, nos lamentamos de no dar un papel a un niño que no sabe el eh escribir y no puede leer el español correctamente como debe. Entonces yo eh elegí tener una escuela bilingüe como Stewart para que mi niño en futuro puede leer español y inglés al mismo tiempo. Y como nosotros que somos hispanos, por mi parte, es muy importante para mis hijos tener el programa como tiene Stewart. Para mí eh tengo eh mi niño que está en tercer grado y yo no puedo cambiarle eh para que agarre una otra escuela con programa pues para mí es muy difícil. Eh para mí tener ese programa en esa escuela eh porque en el futuro yo voy a usar la escuela eh que el programa yo voy a meter mi niño pequeño. Tengo otro hijo más pequeño. Y es muy importante que tengamos maestros y yo vengo que no nos quiten eso porque es muy importante para nosotros como padres que somos bilingües. Disculpen, muchas gracias.
Our next public comment is Cristina Huerta. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, excuse my voice. I'm getting over a cold. But good evening. My name is Cristina Huerta, and I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. I logged on tonight to urge you to prioritize filling the teacher vacancies in our district. We understand, we've heard it, that this is a statewide issue, but truly, W C C U S D is facing far more vacancies than surrounding districts. The school year is almost over, and so many students at Kennedy still do not have a permanent teacher in their classroom. My department, I teach Spanish, and my department was affected this year because we were not able to hire a third Spanish teacher. So for ten weeks at the beginning of the year, students who were enrolled in Spanish one and Spanish two were just sitting in a classroom with no permanent teacher, no curriculum. They were doing nothing. And it was well into the second quarter when finally the decision was made to enroll the students into edgenuity courses. However, this was not and will never be an adequate solution. Doing asynchronous work on edgenuity does not equal learning. This was proven last year when we had two science vacancies at Kennedy. We never filled them, and students were forced to do what they could with online biology and chemistry curriculum. We continue to see those struggles this year when students are now enrolled in a science class with a teacher, but they definitely feel that they are behind. The effects of the teacher vacancies are never ending because now for next year, for whatever reason, it was decided that the Spanish vacancy position was going to be cut. So now there is no hiring being done for a third Spanish teacher for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. And if that position is ever open, we're going to have a really hard time filling it because we do not have, give ourselves the opportunity to adequately find a candidate. I urge you to fill these vacancies because they are affecting teachers who are overworked and students who are not learning what they should. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Diana Mendez.
Ah, hi, my name is Diana Mendez. My first language is Spanish. I want to try to speak English, but if I confuse, I speak to Spanish. My son is in the first grade now. He's studying last year in kindergarten. I am, Sandra mentioned, he is studying when we don't have teacher. He is studying with the whole class, English class. But for him, it's so confused because he say, why are I going to now to the other class? I have already my, my group. And I, I tried to explain to him. Now he got it. Now he have to go into a combo. So how I can explain to him now? Because this morning, he hear me speak to my husband, and I tried to explain to my husband what's going on in the school. And he say, oh, I don't want to go to the other class. I don't want to go to the third grade. And I am a second grade. So how I can explain my child that? That was my concern. And the other, um, two months ago, the teacher was absent for two days because she was sick. And they explained the, the class in three classrooms of kindergarten, third grade, and second grade. And he got to the third grade, and he going to the office and complaining, and he explained, oh, you know what? I don't feel comfortable. I have to call my mom to come to pick her up because my day is off. And he cried. So how I can explain him now that big change in school? It's not possible. It's not fair. I think it's not fair for the other kids because it's supposed to be, they have to choose for kids going to a third and get a second grade. How I explain to him, oh, you need to go to a third grade, but you are in second grade.
Our next public comment is Dee. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Hope you can hear me. I am Danielle Rogers. I'm a parent from West County Mandarin School. My son is in second grade there. I'm just doing public speaking tonight here at the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your attention about our wonderful I B program. I know that I B is on the schedule for the agenda tonight. It's the F one agenda item. I just want to speak in support of our I B program that we have, especially for young learners. I think it's an incredible program that helps teach them about not just the world, but our place in it and how to be a good citizen, how to understand cultural differences, interpret the world around them, and be an excellent part of a functioning society. And they really have done a very good job with our I B program and is extremely important to keep these programs going so that we can raise up a generation of children that have a really firm grasp on the global kind of system that exists. Our community was having meltdown. Um, beyond just, you know, our borders and where we are in the world. So thank you so much for your time tonight, and please support I B going forward. It's incredibly important to keep us at the forefront of education and also set our students up for success on the global scale. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Nasira McCoy.
Good evening to the board and the W C C U S D community here in attendance and virtually. My daughter is in second grade DLI program at Stewart and has been there since kindergarten. We enrolled almost entirely based on the DLI program. Her enrollment was a result of an intra-district transfer, which, to my understanding, makes up a good percentage of our school, community, and population. How was this decision made to phase out this program without considering pending transfers? We are aware of at least twelve, which combined with confirmed numbers would result in a full class. We are constantly disheartened by the challenges to such an amazing program for the district. We have gone through staffing shortages, program uncertainty, and now the decision to phase the program out, which came as a complete surprise to our entire community. While we have been assured of the continuation of the program through next year, unexpected and lack, unexpected and lack of transparency in the program decision leaves us doubtful. It's, and since it seems that it comes down to mostly money, constantly undermining the confidence in the sustainability of the program discourages enrollment, in turn affecting budget to effectively staff the program, leaving us in a cycle we can't win. One of the things that attracted us to Stewart was the program, which provides an important skill for our children. All families have different needs, and a variety of in-school offer, in-school offerings helps to attract families to our district and our school in general. I was concerned my child wouldn't be, wouldn't be challenged, and I love the interdisciplinary aspect of the DLI program. As a Black mother, I appreciate the opportunity for my daughter to learn something I myself have not mastered. The confidence she showed in her ability to speak another language is awe-inspiring. She is teaching me.
Our next public comment is Sarah Barchard. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Thank you for in advance for your time today. My name is Sarah Barchard. I have two students at Vista Virtual. I was disappointed to hear about the three teachers being cut from our Vista Virtual family, and I'm pleading with the board to please reconsider this decision. West Contra Costa Unified has created a really special program with Vista Virtual, and I encourage the district to continue to invest in it by keeping the incredible humans who continue to dedicate so much of themselves to students and families like mine. The teachers at Vista Virtual are truly spectacular. They really go above and beyond. But I want to point out that they are also human, and there is a limit to the work that they can shoulder. Less of them on staff means the burden is greater, and we shouldn't take that lightly. I don't think that there's going to be less of a need for teachers anytime soon. In fact, just listening to the comments tonight, it is apparent that there's an increased need for them and will be an even bigger need for the ones who serve programs like Vista. One of the biggest things that I think Vista does really well is providing a learning path that's truly individualized to the student. My family is enrolled into Vista just three years ago because the district we currently live in does not, in my opinion, prioritize students and their individual way of learning, growing, and contributing to the community, despite that being their published mission. Both of my kiddos are thriving at Vista, and I really believe it's because they receive individualized support from their teachers. Currently, the teachers are able to give support specific to each student because of the classes are small. I'm concerned that less teachers will mean bigger classes and less opportunities for things like small groups and other enrichment lessons. Opportunities like these and others offered at Vista have had a tremendous impact on my students and those that I've seen in person. They make them excited about learning, but also help sharpen their skills and further their ability to apply what they've learned to real-life situations. I strongly encourage the board to reconsider the decision to not invite the three teachers back next year. They're not only needed and loved, but they're also the cornerstone to a unique offering that sets this district apart from any other in the Bay.
Our next public comment is Christian Santiago.
Comience la escuela en Stewart como estudiante de jardín de infantes con más ramar en sing. Ahora soy estudiante de cuarto grado en Stewart con más gran amor. Soy Cristian Santiago y creo que deberías ayudarnos a preservar Stewart DLI para el próximo año. En casa mi mamá no hablaba español. Mi papá lo hace pero no me lo enseñó. Aprendía a hablar español en la escuela. Aprender a hablar español me ha ayudado a comunicarme con mis abuelos que solo hablen español. Me ha ayudado a aprender más sobre mi cultura y a amplificar mi comprensión de América Latina. Este año incluso tuvimos amigos por correspondencia de México. Por favor, ayúdame a salvar a Stewart.
Our next public comment is Alamo Brown. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd just say good afternoon, Board. This is Rodney Almo Brown, a community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. You know, I understand that there's some severe budget cuts that has to be made, and of course, the proverbial kicking the can down the road has taken place through previous administrations besides this administration. And so here we are, the day of reckoning. I'm deeply concerned about what's going on at Deans High School as President Smith Folds and Vice President Dimitri Hoy was there yesterday speaking with the student body as well as some staff members. However, I don't know who made the recommendation to get rid of Mr. Damon Cole and Mr. Tyree Reed is making a grave decision, and here's why. When you have men, when you have men like that, especially Black men who are at a school that is predominantly Black, or shall I say, has the most Black students in the entire district of the West Contra Costa Unified School District, this sets a precedence. This is not definitely a good look. There's a lot of things that could potentially happen on this campus that these young men were prevented from happening. There was one incident that took place where a gun was brought on campus from an outside student that these two young men were able to corral the gun and not allow any further damage to take place. There could have been gunfire that could have erupted. Someone could have gotten killed on their campus, but these two young men were there to save the day. I don't know how this is going on or why this is going on, but to remove them from a setting like this is going to be what we call communal suicide. I ask the board as well as the C B O to go back and reconsider these two positions. Having these young men off campus is not going to be a good look for that, for that school, period. And it's sad that there's a Black principal who's there who's going to have to deal with the onset, or shall I say, the residual effects of what's going to transpire if these two young men don't return in the fall. Thank you very much. God bless.
Our next public comment is Shalon Santiago.
Hello, WCCUSD board. I'm sad to say we have to meet again. I'm Sean Santiago, parent to Ava and Christian. You'll hear from Ava in a minute. Last year, we started the year off without three teachers. Our school community banded together and we were able to show you the inequality in our schools. After weeks, we were given teachers and our kids were able to finish off the school year strong. This year, we were so happy we were fully staffed. All our students had teachers. Our students were able to go to school feeling confident and secure as all students should. We were notified last week that the district is phasing out DLI at Stewart. This came to a shock to us after we fought so hard for our program last year and so many district board members lended their support for our program. It just suddenly gets cut. Tonight, I'm here to urge board members to ask hard questions of our school district leadership team. Ask them this, ask them why this decision was made earlier, why it wasn't made earlier this year, giving families time to prepare. Ask, why wasn't this decision made with the collaboration of our school community? Why were we not given the warning that our enrollment was too low to continue? With phasing out of Stewart at, or phasing out of DLI at Stewart, what is in store for the rest of our WCCUSD DLI schools? That includes your beloved Washington. Who else is in jeopardy of losing their beloved DLI program? Will they be notified or will they be cut suddenly? These decisions have been made behind our backs and closed doors without regards to our school community. You, as a board member, have the power and the responsibility to push these questions and require answers. The most important question that you need to ask is with phasing out Stewart DLI at Stewart, how is our school going to survive the following years? With eliminating a class track every year, we will get smaller. How long can we sustain that? How long will Stewart survive?
Our next public comment is Kate. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, I'm a longtime board watcher. And these cuts sound so familiar for what us older parents with kids that are thirty, forty, fifty years old went through. Hang in there, it will. If you do make a difference. And I'm so glad that you're responding and you're being active. I'm though, however, talk, asking for some assistance on the other end. K-12 is important. But the seniors should be in the mix too. We don't stop learning and benefit from adult education classes. Not necessarily career ending, but enrichment. Sometimes having one day a week at a senior center makes the difference for someone who's trying to stay at home and not have to move into assisted living. This adult education program at WCCUSD has supported three programs that have hung on and we hope that we can continue to serve approximately four to five hundred adults getting enrichment and encouragement and socialization before they have to move to assisted living. So I hope that we're in the mix as well. We're deserving of being educated and enriched as well. And I hope that all of you that are parents now will get to be older adults as well. It's not all that bad. Thanks very much. Good night, everybody.
Our next public comment is Ava Santiago.
Now I'm going to translate most of what my brother just said in the English. I started school at Stewart as a kindergartner with Ma- Master Martin Singh. Now I'm a second grader at Stewart with Master Reyes. Hi, I'm Ava Santiago and I think you should help us preserve Stewart DLI for next year. At home, my mom doesn't speak Spanish. My dad does, but he didn't teach it to me. I learned how to speak Spanish at school. I know how to read and write it in both English and Spanish. Learning to speak Spanish has helped me communicate with my grandparents who only speak Spanish. It helped me learn more about my culture and expanded my understanding of Latin America. This year, our teacher taught us a Flo- Florecorico dance from Mexico. I love my school. Please help us save Stewart DLI.
Our next public comment is Jen Douglas. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I am the parent of a kindergartner at Fairmont Elementary with another one on the way. Fairmont has informed us that we'll be losing our Title I funding for next year combined with a site budget cut of twenty-five percent. We're going to have a sixty-six percent total budget reduction for our school. We would like to ask the board to reconsider this. Last year, when we did qualify, our free and reduced price meal student percentage was forty-five point three percent. And this year it is forty-five point two percent. So we only have a point one percent difference in terms of our demographic threshold need. And by losing these, we will be losing site supervisor staff during lunch and recess. When we didn't have this funding, we were unable to open the field unless we had appropriate parent volunteers. So this deprived our students of a safe place to run and play sports and resulted in more injuries because they only had overcrowded blacktop to play on. It will defund our online licenses that our teachers use to provide better education within what our kids are trying to learn, especially in terms of reading. And then less counseling, which is very critical. We have a twenty percent sped population and only one person who can review all of the IAPs in the entire elementary school. We have a wonderful seventy-nine percent minority student enrollment with thirty percent English language learners and thirty different languages spoken. We have a wonderful set of teachers and kids who really want to learn. But we are looking to the district to understand why we need this cut to happen at this time when we use this money for counseling, teacher professional development, material supplies, and then teacher intervention hours for student support meetings and extra help for our high needs kids. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Clear and I teach fourth and fifth grade at Siege Elementary School. It is my seventh year at Siege and every year the students have been severely impacted by teacher vacancies. The treatment continues to be accepted and ignored, even though students are not receiving an education and teachers cannot do their jobs. There are four out of twelve classes this year without a permanent credential teacher. Each of these classrooms has experienced multiple adults come in and out. Students have also been split into different classrooms for months at a time. The few teachers here are giving everything possible to make up for the problems caused by the shortage. They take extra students from other grades, giving them supplies from their own classrooms, making room for them from their limited space and oftentimes creating weeks of material for them. This workload is unsustainable and the stress grows toxic. We need to recruit and retain teachers at Siege. Students deserve to go through school with adults that they love and trust. Teachers deserve to work in a sustainable profession. We need to focus on Siege instead of accepting the teacher shortage that harms the community every year. The teacher shortage at Siege Helms and Kennedy reflects a systemic racism that targets these communities. We need to value teachers and community members. We need to finally solve this problem. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Dean Navarro. Please unmute yourself.
Hello.
Yes.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Hi, my name is Danielle Navarro. I'm a longtime educator, teacher, counselor in the district. And also have three kids at Stewart, a sixth grader, a second grader and TK student. My kids' sixth grade and second grade have been in the DLI program and this has always been a source of pride for me and my family. I have a nephew in the Berkeley Unified DLI program and I can truly attest that the Stewart program is just as good. My kid's first language is Spanish and the program only strengthened their speaking, reading and writing skills. And they, they truly are an asset to this, this program. Phasing out the DLI program is going to, is going in a different direction than the district's previous commitment to DLI and viol literacy. We, the parents, have collected a list of incoming kinders that submitted for transfer for the DLI program. My TK daughter is also on that list. Please review the list and see if the numbers work. We think we are pretty close to your targeted number. Also for the middle school grades, my sixth grader had the privilege of having Miss Ortega and being taught math and history and Spanish this school year. Next year, it would be abruptly cut. So let's work together as a community and district to see how we can continue the DLI program. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Noah Yares.
Yes, say hi. You want to go down? You want to be right here? You feel embarrassed? Hello, all. I'm going to read this on behalf of Noah. Says, hello, my name is Noah Yanyas. I am a second grade student at Stewart dual language immersion. When I started at Stewart, my brother and I didn't have a teacher. I felt sad because I deserved to learn Spanish. Now I feel sad that my sister will not have a kindergarten class to learn in Spanish. Please save the program at Stewart. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Stephanie Duran. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm, hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Duran. I am a mom to a kindergartner and a third grader at Highland Elementary. And I was here just to talk about an issue that my kindergarten class has been having with their room being with the bad order and they had a change to another room. So with having that issue, I, I'm trying to see if we can get the rooms remodeled because I'm also going to be having a new kindergartner coming up this new year. So I don't know how, you know, with budget cuts and everything, and also it's not fair to her teacher also. And even other kids, my third grader going into fourth grade next year with maybe all, all Highland has to be remodeled. So I hope that you take into consideration seeing, take, maybe bringing somebody over to have it checked out because it's bad for the students and my daughter gets sick. You know, when she's at school and when she's at home, she's fine. And I've also heard from other parents that their kids also. So it's not fair, you know, to little kids, even to her teacher and other teachers, not just my class, not just my daughter's class. So I hope you take into, you know, don't leave Highland behind, you know, have them get a new remodeled classroom for all new students coming. Because honestly, Highland to me is a really great school. My daughter has been there since kindergartner and I have a kindergarten going to first. And like I said, my new kindergarten coming this year. So I hope that, you know, somebody can hear and go check Highland out and have it remodeled for new kids coming. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Jeremiah Rome.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Rome and I teach at Helms Middle School where I've taught for all sixteen years of my career. I have read the district's response to the Williams complaint regarding teachers' vacancies at our site. Many of the solutions listed in the response were in place prior to the filing of the complaint. Clearly, these solutions have not been enough. The substitute teachers from Teach Start who joined us mid-year have been placed in the most difficult position I can imagine as a new teacher and we are burning out these aspiring teachers. One has already stopped coming. The Williams complaint response also cites that vacancies are a statewide problem, which is true. However, it is affecting our district schools, especially our Title I schools, to a greater extent than even neighboring districts. Trust me, I've checked and lately I've been checking more. Students and families in our schools deserve to share in the expectation that on day one, they have qualified teachers who will get to know their children and help them progress throughout the year. I, as a parent, would absolutely demand that of my district, of my child's district. We cannot accept a response that boils down to we tried our best. Since I'm up here with more time, I want to express solidarity with Vista and the Stewart communities who clearly are impassioned about their programs and we should not be making access to wanted programs more difficult for our communities. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Marlen Vasquez. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Hi, good evening to the board. My name is Marlen Vasquez and I'm speaking today as a West County Mandarin school parent and as an educational researcher. I'm getting my doctorate. I'm also a daughter of undocumented Mexican immigrant parents and a first generation college student. Thus, I speak as a woman with a very complex identity. I want to begin by saying unequivocally that my two Latina daughters are having a wonderful educational experience under Dr. Peterson's leadership. He has worked tirelessly to run a school that provides a quality education to all students, regardless of their socioeconomic status. But I would also like to share my frustration and sadness that I must attend a board meeting to be able to share that insight. Why isn't WCCUSD serving more parents, seeking their qualitative input and using that input to make decisions, especially budgetary decisions? The board speaks about honoring racial diversity, about understanding that Black and Brown students must overcome barriers to get their education and you speak of your commitment to combat in educational inequities. So why aren't you all working harder to listen to the voices of parents, especially Black and Brown parents? And I mean truly listen. I heard parents tonight, their voices heavy with emotion and it saddens me that you all might just move forward in your decision-making as if those parents' emotions and perspectives don't matter. Why does it feel like when parents speak, and this isn't my first board meeting, with the same pattern? So why does it feel like when parents speak, including Black and Brown parents, that their voices and their pleadings fall on deaf ears? If you are all truly honorable in your intentions, if you all truly care about all stakeholders in the WCCUSD community, you will reflect on these questions that I am asking and you will start making concrete changes to connect to more parents, to truly listen to their voices and to make decisions informed by those voices. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next public comment is Mackenzie Guzman. Our next public comment is Mackenzie Guzman.
My name is Mackenzie Guzman. I am a third grader in the DLI program as Stewart Elementary. My name is Mackenzie Guzman. I am a third grader in the DLI program as Stewart Elementary. I'm here once again to advocate for DLI at Stewart last year. I stood here and spoke to you all because we didn't have enough teachers for us. And now I'm here because they have given up on DLI altogether. DLI is not just important to me. It's a part of who I am. I love speaking in Spanish and now I'm able to read and write in Spanish fluently. If DLI ends and my little sister wouldn't have the same opportunity as me when she starts school. It would be unfair to have to transfer to a new school to be able to continue my education with DLI. To a school like Washington that has ongoing wait lists to even enroll. Please help us save DLI and Stewart, the school that has been our second home. Thank you for listening.
Staff, before you call the next person, board with, if there's no objections, I would like to extend public comments so we can hear all comments. Staff, we have about how many comments left?
About fifteen.
Fifteen. Thank you. Community, when we are at our hour mark, we need to extend if we want to hear everyone. So that's what we're doing. So we want to extend the comments till we hear all the fifteen people left. Board, are there any objections? Seeing none, public comment is extended. Go ahead, please call the next person, staff. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ruth Salada. Please unmute yourself.
Good night, everyone. Uh, my name is Ruth Salada. I'm Isabella Salada's mo- mother. Um, I would like to reconsiderate about this situation, about the teachers from Vista Vito. Um, the reason right now is like, uh, the program I've been for us, uh, been a bliss. Cause we can find a school for my daughters. And I would like, you know, the teacher, Mrs. Mally, she's an excellent teacher, always helping her kids. Um, and she support my daughter a lot. And I, I please, please reconsiderate this. And thank you so much. Good night.
Our next public comment is Hadasa De Niro Dammelo.
Hello, good evening. My name is Hadasa Dammelo. I am a student at Deansah High School in the eleventh grade. We're here to present our petition for the role of Student Support Service Supervisor Coach Dame. We have all experienced the support and guidance of Coach Dame. We are deeply concerned about the potential removal of one of our only African-American trusted adults at Deansah High School in the West Contra Costa County. Coach Dame was always there for us, checking on our mental health, our grades and overall well-being. He did not limit his care to the students. He reached out to every student regardless of their color or race. Coach Race is more than just an adult figure in our school. He is a leader of support and trust for all students. According to data of the NCES, students perform better academically and socially when they have, excuse me. When they have a role model who share their racial and or ethnic background. The district's decision threatens this diversity and could potentially impact the academic performance and emotional well-being for many students at Deansah High School. We must ensure the decisions made by the West Contra Costa Costa, which West Contra Costa prioritize not only educational excellence, but also inclusivity, diversity and mental health support. We urge you to reconsider this decision. Keep Coach Dame as the Student Support Service Supervisor at Deansah High School. Where he can continue his invaluable work with our youth. I also wanted to thank President Smith Folds and Clerk Gonzalez Hoy for coming to Deansah and meeting with us yesterday. Also, in under eighteen hours, we have successfully got five hundred and forty-five signatures. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Nisa Bremer. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, board. Uh, my name is Nisa Bremer and I'm a parent at Fairmont Elementary School. Um, I'm calling because we are, um, going through something where our Title I funding is going to be, uh, taken away this year. This is our second year, um, having been under Title I, um, through the district. I wanted to make a note that the federal number for Title I is forty percent of students with free and reduced lunch. Um, Fairmont is at forty-five percent. As you heard, um, my, uh, friend Jen say earlier. Uh, we're at forty-five point three or point two percent based on the year. Um, which means that we are obviously over the threshold. We have a large number in our community that are, um, free and reduced lunch. We hit that number. So I'd love for the board to, uh, let us know why it is that we are not sticking with the forty percent number. The federally mandated number. Uh, problem is that for schools like ours that are on board or we're very close between that, which is tricky. Percent, we're bound for thing. And not. Uh, which as you heard Jen s- say earlier, means that we have a, um, we have lost sixty-six percent of our site budget this year. Which means that all of the incredible work our teachers have been doing in intervention, um, after school tutoring, et cetera. To work with our students who are of need, who are of need this year, next year will continue to be. Um, are going to struggle to, to maintain that level now where we lose that funding. Um, and going back and forth year to year in this kind of middle ground is really, uh, difficult. Because we are not able to put together programs that are consistent for our students. We have, um, sixty percent on duplicated count, thirty percent of our students are English learners and we have a twenty percent sped, uh, population. Our students need support. Please follow the percent number. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jennifer Gonzalez.
Good evening, board members. Of the Board of Education. I'm going to read a letter from the DLI co-chair member named Carla. Our dual language immersion parent advisory committee, DLI PAC. Met earlier today to discuss the recent decision impacting current and prospective children. And families at Stewart Elementary School in Pinole. In their future enrollment into dual language immersion course of study. We are very disappointed that in the same month that WCCUSD chooses to recognize this month as National Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month. That highlights the importance of inclusivity and supports a diverse student body. That this month's DLI decision at Stewart Elementary do not reflect this sentiment posted. The goal or vision for our community. A student's and a family's right to choose a primary years program in line with their educational goals. Must be widely accessible to all families, whether or not they meet a threshold of number of seats at their schools. If we can be transparent, recruitment into current DLI programs have been challenged and limited by the time sensitive. Information that's made available to families at early learning programs via social media and current district website and district sponsored events that have had low attendance, participation by our prospective families. Our DLI PAC collectively and urgently requests a much needed extension of time and space to meet and provide discourse with perspective and interested families in order to confirm next year's families enrollment at Stewart DLI pathway program. As of this evening, it is estimated that at least fourteen students are interested in the program. Please find it in your heart to preserve Stewart Elementary's DLI program.
Our next public comment is Kalila Williams. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, um, board. I am happy to be here tonight to represent my kindergartner, Micah Williams, and the Stewart DLI community. Um, I'd like to start by saying thank you for hearing our voices tonight. And just to give a little background, I am the parent of four children who have been in the West County District for over six years now. I have an older child who's graduating this year with special needs. So I've been in and out of the district. And seen a lot of despair, despair, uh, disparaging actions and things that have really disillusioned what I expected, uh, my parenting. Process to be with my kids. I, I really expect a lot of support. I really expected our kids to be, um, appreciated and valued and dedicated. Um, but it's really disheartening. It's really frustrating. It's angering. It's saddening. It's heartbreaking to see, um, the people who are supposed to be supporting our children and wanting them to a- a- achieve these high goals, not holding themselves to the, the same standards. The lack of transparency, the lack of inclusion and the overall lack of or of respect for these families and their time and commitment, um, to this, to this district is, is really appalling. Um, I'm a parent volunteer. I spend many, many hours with these, uh, children and I see how they appreciate it. I see these families. And everything that they go through. So I urge the, uh, committee and the district to reevaluate what this decision has, uh, the decision that has been made to cancel the DLI program. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kamia Hall.
Good evening. My name is Kamia Hall and I'm a junior and cheerleader at Deansah High School. I'm here to speak about the student support services, um, to student support services with Dame and Cole. Dame is a great support system for me and many others. I've been through a lot of difficult times and Dame has been able to help me with it. You know, a young teenager with relationship and family problems. Dame was the person I was able to go to. The position being taken away can be a high risk for any other teenagers that's gone through difficult times. Teenagers' years are almost the highest stake for mental health issues. You taking away Dame and his position can damage students and for more students as a whole. Dame is not also a staff, but he is a father figure, uncle and brother to the, the, the community. He's also helped past students like my brothers Rico Tofri and Kyrie Hall. Dame also helped many other students with their mental health abilities and issues. I also want to advertise the roles of Jerome Fletcher, Head Security and Tyree Reed. Making a change for the other community and other high schools for mental health and their ability to have an advocate shouldn't be taken away. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello? Oh, you can hear me? Okay, good. Hi, board. Good, good evening. I'm glad to be here with y'all today. I was in person, but I had to come back. So, um, my concern is that you guys are, the district, um, level cabinet level is dismantling the OASO office and they're not talking to us about what we can have left. And our scout, she's helped us a lot. Y'all hear me coming all the time talking about our APAC. She's helped us organize our APAC. She's helped us get our parents involved and set up more ways for Black parents to have a voice in our district. So, um, I'm concerned about why you guys are not communicating with us and letting us know what's going to happen with our kids and how we're going to fit into LCAP budget. And we filed the ASAT executive committee have filed a Williams complaint for our budget because we have not received it yet. And we've asked for that, well, the Quest for Information Act, I'm sorry, wasn't a Williamson play. But we want to know where are the expenditures that are going towards our children this year so we can make recommendations for next year. And we want to know how are you all planning to service our kids to change the suspensions? And the absenteeism in our district, what's been found on the dashboard. So can you please communicate with the ASAT executive committee? So we can communicate with our APAC parents and our, at our sites level. We would appreciate that. And also we would like for you to support us in starting our DLI Swahili school. So we would like to meet with you all soon regarding that also. Okay, thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Hannah Love.
Hi, my name is Hannah Love. I am a junior and BSC member at Deansah High School. I have been at Deansah for a year now and I've learned that Coach Dame has a huge impact on students academically and mentally. He is one of the most talked about and looked upon staff members and I feel that Coach Dame deserves a continuing title as a Student Support Services Supervisor at Deansah High School. He is a huge role model for not just our African-American students, but all students. And losing Coach Dame will create such a big gap in our community. Looking at all the students and people he has helped improve and the good that he brings. There would be nothing but loss by removing him from our community. I am here with other support to ask and follow through with the non-removal of Coach Dame's position. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Catherine Turner. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Catherine Turner. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I am also a parent of kids at Stewart. I have one son who is in first grade. And I have a son who's currently in TK at Murphy, which is our, uh, neighborhood school and have submitted a transfer for him to come and participate in the DLI program at Stewart, um, which I just recently learned will no longer be possible. My son who's in first grade has, um, pretty extreme anxiety, social anxiety. It is a big task to get him to school. It's a big task at the start of the year to get him comfortable with the teacher and pretty much every day going to school is a difficulty, um, is a challenge for him. And when he started in kindergarten at Stewart, he was in the cohort that didn't have a teacher. And so when we got put into the English class, when the time came that they did ultimately find a, a teacher for the Spanish class. I thought it would be too disruptive for him, um, too difficult for him, given his personality and his emotional struggles to move him over. Um, and so he joined last year. Um, or this is his first year, excuse me. But, uh, I'm concerned that the program, as this is already evidenced, not having the teacher. The program and the lack of support that it's receiving from the district makes us continue to not be set up for success. I am concerned that if I choose to keep my child in this program, that, um, the numbers will dwindle and who's to say that the promise of continuing the program through the current kindergarten all the way through sixth grade will actually hold? If we have people drop out or leave. I think my, my child's cohort is one of the smallest. And again, I think that's due to not having, um, not being staffed when the program started. Um, I know for me, having a son, having my kids at two different schools right now to transfer one of them and not the other would be it's logistically such a nightmare and I just want them to be able to have the same opportunities.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local 21 SSSA chapter president. I am a worker bee in this district also. Today is Administrative Assistance Day. Thank you very much for all of the success that we have in our schools, for those people successfully supporting our students, staff and each other. For all you give, for all you do, for working hard, for being you. For being there day in, day out. Thank you is what this day is about. What is an administrative professional? They're a communications master, a scheduler, a record keeper, budget reports person. Trying to squeeze a lot out of a little bitty penny. lot out of a little bitty penny, travel organizer, especially for those that have study trips at school sites and that goes from the school site all the way down to the district level. Inventory tracker, wears that special Band-Aid that's pink or blue or green or has that happy face on it to make somebody feel better. Office routine maintainer, negotiator. If you just please go to the classroom and participate today, I'll have a sticker for you at the end of the day. And that's for every teacher, administrator and custodial, anybody that really needs that sticker for the day, not just our students, me included. Presenter. They present the best of what we have to give in this school district. It doesn't matter what the day is, what they're doing. They try to put on a smile and make sure that they present the best. And they do what no one else can do. They listen. And we appreciate that so.
Our next public comment is SuJin Jazz. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Um I am SuJin Jazz and I am a parent of a black student or two black students at West County Mandarin School. I wanted to say having access to the International Baccalaureate Program in the public school system is very rare and we definitely feel very fortunate. The IB program is the reason why our child is thriving at West County Mandarin. And while we've decided to enroll our kid in this school and not a charter school or in a school outside the district. My children love learning and they ask great questions. They're caring, compassionate. They feel safe and understood in their school and community and that's because of the IB program and its philosophy. This type of experience is a blessing for my students. They've experienced different cultures. They're learning another language that we don't speak any Mandarin or anything close to that at home. And I hope that the IB program can be made available to all schools and all children in our district. Um I think it makes better citizens for our world and I feel like with our current climate um in our state and our country and our world, this type of education will be a game changer for so many students. And for our district to be able to offer that to our students would be amazing. Um and finally, I just wanna wrap up and say that this is a draw for students and I know that um there would be more students in our district if we could offer an IB curriculum at more of our school sites. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening, board members, staff and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz. I'm a homegrown educator and a fifth grade teacher at Ford Elementary and Community Schools organized for United Teachers of Richmond. I come before you today to advocate passionately for the successful implementation of community schools and the imperative of having a certificated teacher in every classroom as an anti-racist practice. These two initiatives are not just policies, they are moral imperatives that hold the power to transform our educational landscape and dismantle systemic inequities. Community schools embody the ethos of equity, inclusion and holistic support for every student and family. By providing comprehensive services and resources that address the social, emotional and academic needs of our students, community schools create a nurturing environment where all children can thrive. They serve as hubs of empowerment where families and communities are actively engaged in the educational journey of their children. Community schools are not just buildings. They are beacons of hope and opportunity in underserved communities. Furthermore, the presence of a certificated teacher in every classroom is not just a matter of policy, it's a matter of justice. Research has consistently shown that access to quality teaching is the single most important factor in a student's success. By ensuring that every classroom is led by a qualified, certificated educator, we send a powerful message that every child, regardless of their background, deserves the very best education possible. This is not just about closing the opportunity gap. It's about dismantling the structural barriers that perpetuate racial and socioeconomic disparities in our schools. As we strive to build a more just and equitable society, we must recognize that education is the cornerstone of that endeavor. By embracing community schools and prioritizing the presence of certificated teachers in every classroom, we affirm our commitment to anti-racism and the social justice.
Next public comment is Megan Raceport.
Hi, my name is Megan. I'm a senior at El Cerrito High and I'm here to talk about bathrooms. They are often locked at lunch, which California ed code says is not permissible except basically for safety or repairs. Uh I do not believe either is the case. So on February 28th, I filed a Williams complaint with Principal Norrington. Actually, this isn't my first complaint. It's been my white whales since sophomore year. Um last time I jumped through all the hoops and under our previous principle, things got better, but now everything slowly slid back to square one. Mr. Norrington's first response was to email me. He said, we close restrooms when they're inoperable or unusable and once the restrooms are repaired, we reopen them for use. However, when asked, both the custodian and vice principal told me it was due to student behavior. I wrote back to Mr. Norrington and I said that I, if it was not within his power to fix the problems that apparently necessitate locking the bathrooms, he should have immediately sent a complaint to the school board. A month later, he now says, yes, student behavior is the reason, but he will not be investigating further. So my main reason for being here is to request that the school board investigate the issue. I think it's important to convey the reality of the situation at E.C. If you wanna look at the letter of the law, you could argue that technically this is compliance, but it hasn't solved the problem. In fact, everything's worse now. There used to be certain bathrooms where people would go to smoke or vape or whatever and there would be some with people went for, you know, traditional bathroom purposes. Um but the school closed all the bathrooms that people vape in and so the people who vape have simply moved to the remaining bathrooms. Unless E.C. wants to close every single bathroom, locking any only makes things worse for the students who behave, especially disabled students, because people hang out in groups in the wheelchair accessible stalls. To summarize, the ultimate goal should be to reach a state where we can unlock the bathrooms again. Instead, locking the bathrooms seems to be the first and only thing E.C. is willing to do, which does nothing to address the core problem and in fact makes the situation worse for everyone else. The school has no way to actually address these behaviors except begging parents to volunteer to hang out in high school bathrooms. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark Mitchell.
Good evening, President Smith Folds, Ms. Neely Johnson, Board and Cabinet. Um I'm here as the Executive Director of the United Teachers of Richmond to support the statement of our ally, Carissa Provanza of Public Advocates and UTR's President-elect, Mr. Francisco Ortiz, that what's going on at Helm, Stige and Kennedy uh is an emergency. The lack of permanent certificated educators for our students in this district is at an alarming level. And in these three school sites particularly, it's just an educational emergency for the students that are not receiving the education that we are bound to provide for them. But this is not an isolated situation. It's not an anomaly in this district. It's business as usual in West Contra Costa, unfortunately. And this board is not without responsibility. I just wanna remind you that in uh just a few weeks ago, at one of our most severely understaffed schools, Perry's Elementary School with five vacancies, this board approved an administrator's recommendation of three non-relections of educators that were willing to show up every day and provide instruction to our students. If we have three certificated educators that are willing to show up and provide instruction, I would ask that this board, you know, seriously review any reason why they cannot continue to provide instructional services to our students because there's nobody else that's willing to step up and fill those spots. That school now has six vacancies. So let's look at all of the things that are going on here to contribute to this crisis. I wanted to also call the board's attention to a letter that I passed out. I asked Rosa to provide to all of you. And it it regards a teacher that we are referring to civil court for her to be able to receive the pay that's due her under the union contract. It's a sad day in West Contra Costa when uh an educator who shows up every day to provide instruction to her students is denied the very provisions of the contract to to pay her. We ask you, Ms. Neely Johnson, on behalf of the district staff, to direct the staff to promptly and respectfully.
Our next public comment is Kathy S. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy and I have a kindergarten at High School Elementary. I wanna shine light on the importance of environmental health and safety at Highland Elementary. I want to advocate for our children in Room One, also known as K1. While my child suffered from multiple headaches and asthma flare-ups prior to moving rooms, I wanna know what are the plans to improve the health qualities for our students at the campus? Are there any plans on rebuilding? Better air quality within the rooms? Why does it take our teachers being ill and principal to be hospitalized for the just, for the district to take some sort of action? If my neighborhood elementary school is suffering like this, how many other elementary schools are suffering with them? Not just with teacher shortage, but with the health and safety of our students and staffs, let's protect our amazing staff and students and take the steps to improve the campus at Highland Elementary. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jen. Our next public comment is Robin Mills.
Hello, everyone. Um oh hello, board members and everyone online. My name is Robin Mills and I'm here to speak about a situation that's happening at Murphy Elementary. I have a TK there and I am very upset with the policy that I'm being told is a district-wide policy. It's policy 6.3 and it addresses school and classroom visits. We are currently on our third principal this year and our third principal has decided to um send an email on Monday evening um immediately going, ascending into effect this district-wide policy that's currently preventing parents from walking their children to their classrooms. Um I have thoroughly reviewed this policy after requesting it from the principal and I can't see anywhere in the policy where it states that parents should not be allowed or cannot walk their child to their classroom. So um what's happening, I feel like is the um enforcement is not being applied um district-wide because I have another kid in this district and that has never been our situation at the other school that my child has gone to. I spoke with the principal today and I was told that this policy is being enforced due to four parents who have assaulted um her and other staff on the campus. And while I am sympathetic and empathetic to what they are experiencing, I do not believe that that is an adequate response to, I do not believe that preventing all parents from walking their children is an adequate response. We are Title I school and that means that we should really be encouraging our parents to be involved in education at all levels. So our current practice under our principal creates an unnecessary barrier to that parental involvement in our kids' lives. If the policy can't be rescinded for any reason, it definitely needs to be readvised because it was actually written in June of 2007. And if nothing more, maybe parents who are district badge approved should be able to walk their kids.
And our last public comment is Jaskara Carr. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I am a student of Virtual Vista High School. I am talking about the cut of three teachers here in Vista. I don't agree with this cut because my teacher, Mrs. Seale, has to leave that she cares, helps and checks in on me with my work and how I'm doing. Mrs. Seale also helps me with any subject and gave me the understanding I can reach out to her whenever, knowing I can get help on my work. My teacher always helps no matter what time or day. Virtual Vista is a good place for me because since I came to the school, I seen growth in my education, knowledge and grades. Virtual Vista is the best place for me because I feel safe. I can concentrate more better. It will break my heart to see a great teacher like Mrs. Seale leave. Please reconsider this. Lastly, to the board, thank you.
Next public comment is Christina Raya. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, my name is Christina Raya. Um I have a kin, a kinder child. I grew up in a household where only English was taught. And even though both parents spoke Spanish and English, they made the decision not to teach any of us. Um so when my daughter was born, I made the decision that she was going to learn Spanish, whether or not I spoke it, you know, correctly or not. Um so her going to the DLI program at Stewart, um the program is like gone way beyond my expectations. Um we love Stewart. And it was very stressful trying to transfer her to Stewart. Um I had a lot of issues with my job. I had a lot of issues with transportation to the school she was going up before. Um she had the issues of of, you know, the the social, emotional part. Transferring, she was heartbroken. She was moving from one school to another, basically. So she took some uh I'd say took some getting used to. And when I asked her how she felt about having to go to a different school, uh if things changed, she, her quote was very mad and upset. And this is coming from my kindergartner. Um besides myself signing the petition to keep the DLI program at Stewart, a lot of my family has also signed it as well. Um of keeping her in, speaking both languages. And I I'm also very proud of of my daughter because, you know, she corrects me a lot of the time. Um I just, hopefully, we can keep the program going.
Thank you so much, staff. Thank you, community, for your public comment. Thank you to all the kids and students that spoke tonight. Um we are now moving on to B8 Agenda Review and Adoption. Board, do we have any changes to the agenda? I would like to take off number 10, Resolution 2324-61 School Lunch Hero Day and move it to May 1st or May 1st meeting. Are there any objections to that change? Seeing no objections, are there any objections or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is now adopted. We are now moving on to B9 Approval of the Minutes. Approval of April 8th, 2024 minutes. Are there any changes? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. If you'll give me just a minute. Okay, I have two very small changes on number five. WCCUSD Public Comment, Jack Weir is spelled W-E-I-R. And then in the Implementation Plan Update, uh there's something about a annual NOB audit. No idea what that is. Why don't we just make it annual audits? And if those are approved, I'll just send them in. Thank you.
Any other changes to the minutes from April 8th? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the minutes with the changes noted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, board. We're gonna go straight to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abduga Parro.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Abstain.
Thank you. And, excuse me, and I'm a yes. Thank you. We are now moving to our resolutions. We are skipping Resolution Number 10. It's gonna come back on May 1st and we're going to Resolution Number, we're going to Agenda Item Number 11. Resolution Number 2324-62. Ms. Forrest, this is your Ms. Forrest, this is your item, please.
Yes, thank you and good evening, President Smith Folds, Trustees, CEO, Neely Johnson and Community. This is recognizing April twenty-one, fifteen, excuse me, through nineteen, twenty, twenty-four as National Public School Volunteer Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education and WCCUSD Superintendent recognize and commend volunteers to and join the nation in celebrating National Public School Volunteer Week, April fifteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education and WCCUSD Superintendent encourage activities to recognize volunteers this week.
Thank you. Board, is there a motion? I'll move Resolution number two, three, two, four, six, two, National Public School Volunteer Week, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you very much, board. Any comments? Staff, could we put one minute on the clock for comments? Trustee Reckler, I see your hand. If you wait for the clock, please.
I couldn't made my comment faster than the clock coming up. I just want to take a moment and thank our volunteers. They do not get enough support or recognition and the district would literally fall apart without them. So thank you for all that you do in the millions of ways. People who show up who don't even have kids in the schools anymore and show up and do lunch. It's really admirable and unbelievable and I thank you all for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead, please. I'm sorry, wait for the clock for me.
Thank you very much, President Smith Folds. I just want to say thank you to all of the volunteers that we have in the district. I know that it's not easy to volunteer. And I don't mean because of, just because of time and schedules, but sometimes it's literally not easy to get into the system to be able to volunteer. But people persevere because they understand that it's important and that it's actually critical to the success of the district. So for all of you out there, including my wife, Angela, who don't hear it enough, thank you so much for the time that you spend not only working with your own children, but your children's classmates as well.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? I would like to make a comment. Parent volunteering and guardian volunteering, community volunteering, it's the backbone of our school sites. And I want to thank every volunteer that comes into the school. I encourage everyone to get badged so you're able to come into the school to volunteer. You're able to come in to do lunch duty. You're able to come in to do yard duty. You're able to do traffic duty. You're able to go to your students' classroom. You're able to go to other classrooms. Start that volunteer process now. Go to our district website and type in volunteer and it'll show you exactly how to get your volunteer badge. That volunteer badge, you get it once and you can keep it the entire time. You only have to do the process once. So I want to thank you and again, I encourage you to go ahead and start that process so you'll be ready for not only next year, but the years that your students are enrolled in school and beyond. One of our strongest groups of volunteers are our grandparents. So please don't think that once your child graduates that you're no longer needed at the school. You're very much needed at the school. I'm complete. Hey, board, we're gonna go straight to the vote. We are voting to accept Resolution number two, three, two, four, six, two, National Public School Volunteer Week, twenty twenty-four. Trustee Pal Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdouka Parro.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving on to number twelve, Agenda Item number twelve, Resolution number two, three, two, four, six, three, National Poetry Month, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education and the WCCUSD Superintendent proclaim April first through April thirtieth as National Poetry Month. Be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education encourages activities to recognize and celebrate the cultural riches our community has to offer and to recognize the important role poetry plays in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities and programs.
Thank you so very much, board. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
I second.
Trustee Pal Carr, I heard you. You're second. Thank you so much, trustee Reckler. Trustee Pal Carr is our second. Board, are there any comments? Trustee Phillips, go, sorry, trustee Phillips, go ahead. Can I get a minute on the clock, please?
Communication is extremely important. And poetry is one of the ways that you learn to communicate and express yourself. I was actually, I actually majored in English literature. Well, I double majored, but one of my majors was English literature. So I have a BA in English literature and I've spent a lot of time reading and writing poetry. And I think that it has helped me tremendously in my walk in life, particularly my communication skills. And I see how that training and that experience manifests itself every day as an attorney. And I encourage people to read and write poetry. It is a great thing.
Thank you very much, trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips, what was your second major?
Political science.
Thank you very much. I majored in literature, so we have something in common. Any other comments? I have a comment. Thank you so very much. This is a great resolution. I encourage everyone, if you don't know the poets Langston Hughes, Gwendolyn Brooks, Amanda Gordon, Nikki Giovanni, Jericho Brown, Lucille Clifton, Margaret Walker, Paul Lawrence Dunbar, look them up. They are just a few of our amazing black poets, but they are just a few of our amazing black poets. We have so many more. So please take this month, this time, to look up those poets and to understand their poetry and what they wrote about and how it was a reflection of what they lived. I am complete. We are now moving on to B thirteen, Resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, sixty-four, National Student Leadership Week, April twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you, yes. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to designate the week of April twenty-second through twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, National Student Leadership Week. And be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and encourages our student leaders to continue to advocate for student voice and leadership in education throughout the WCCUSD system.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I can second.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I would like to begin by thanking the dynamic duo for the first making the motion and the second. Student leadership is extremely important. We have to learn and I think it begins when we are youth to have ownership and control, right, of our own past and our lives. And I think that students should take every opportunity that they can, not just to sit up here, which is great, but also to do leadership roles at their schools. When I look back on my own journey, one thing that I would have done differently is I would have participated in student government because I think that it is a great thing. So for those of you out there who have the desire to do that, please do because I think it will serve you greatly in the future.
Thank you so much. Is there another comment from the board? Let's go to trustee Reckler and then I'll bounce back to the student trustees. Trustee Reckler, go ahead. Wait for the, wait for the clock for me, please. Uh-oh, hold on a minute. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I want to thank the two of you for showing up every week. You guys are doing a great job. You're finally getting into the swing of it. And I'm very appreciative that you're here and for the comments that you make. And I'm also appreciative to a pass board that actually created these seats. And one of the things about the West Contra Costa Unified School District is that we were one of the first boards in California to have student trustees. And so a wonderful first, a wonderful opportunity for students. And I'm glad you're here and I hope that you'll tell those that are coming behind you about this opportunity and how to apply and so them sit and get into it in real life. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Pal Carr, go ahead.
I would like to thank you all for your acknowledgements. I also wanted to, I wanted to encourage all of the people watching through Zoom and here to really get involved in student government because I have been doing it since I was in middle school and I think that it's a really, really, really valuable experience. You're able to represent the thoughts of your peers and do the advocacy in yourself and it's just an invaluable skill to have. And we need more representation in this district. So I would really like to push forward and advocate for students to go forth into their school site councils or to join All Student Congress, represent their school, their community. It's just, it's really important in this day and age.
Thank you very much. Trustee Abdouka Parro.
Yeah, well, I would love to echo Camille's thoughts. I think that it's also really important for students to involve themselves in student government, not only for the experience, but for like the knowledge that comes with it because there's so many times I've come back from board meetings and I'm like, that was dealt with in such an interesting way and it made me like think about like how I want to mature and grow up. And I think it like left me with a lot of thoughts. And I think it's really amazing, especially at this age, it's important. Like this is such a crucial age for development and like seeing role models like handle things in such a respectful and like, but also in like a direct way is really like a really good model to set. And I want to thank everyone for acknowledging, but I also would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian.
Yes, I want to echo the same thing, to thank student trustees for them to step to the plate, to be, to learn leadership and being involved in aspect of the board. And this would take them into the future. And so, and for all of our young people, leadership is very important to be great leaders and that you will be able to step to the plate for any task and to see things done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Christian. My comment is similar to everyone else's, but I want to thank you specifically Abdouka Parro. That was the nicest thing that has been said in a long time about how we handle things on this board. So thank you very much. It was well said. Student leadership is beyond important. From student councils in elementary school to middle school and leadership classes and student councils there to high school and your leadership classes and All Student Congress. And it's not just those student leaders, but it's also the ones that we saw tonight. The ones that come in and advocate for their school site and they may not have a position. They may not have a title, but they always have a voice. You were role models to those second graders that were here and did a speech and said what they need. And they were looking at you. They were not looking at us. They were looking at the people closest to their age group and that's you. So you really are a role model for all the students and all of the adults in our district because it's your voice and you are the people who we are supposed to center and serve. So thank you for continuing to use your voice. We can't wait to hear more from you and we are greatly appreciative of all you do. I'm complete. Thank you, board. We are now moving on to Agenda Item B fourteen, Resolution number two, three, two, four, six, five, Arab American Heritage Month, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
I'm sorry, point of order, I think we need to vote on that.
We absolutely do. Thank you so much. I was so excited. I forgot to vote. All right, here we go. We are gonna go with trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdouka Parro.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. I went out of order. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Now we are moving on to Resolution number two, three, two, four, six, five, Arab American Heritage Month, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board joins the Arab American Foundation in celebrating April as twenty twenty-four National Arab American Heritage Month in recognition of the many contributions Arab Americans have made in our society.
Thank you so much, board. Is there a motion? I'll move Resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, six, five, Arab American Heritage Month, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Christian. We are now moving on to comments. Are there any comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I don't like to compare people's pain because everyone has their own journey and everyone has their own experience. And I think when you do that, you take away from someone else's experience. But I do want to take this moment not to just acknowledge the contributions of the Arab American community, but also to point out some of the parallel struggles that they've had and that they continue to have. I understand, even though I am not Arab American, discrimination and racism and all of those things are very real and they have been very in-your-face during recent times for the Arab American community and I would like to acknowledge that.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Trustee Abdouka Parro.
Yeah, I want to echo trustee Phillips' thoughts and also I think it's important and I think that it's great that we have Arab Heritage Month this month, especially what's going on in Palestine. I know I have a lot of Arab friends who are advocating and it, I'm sure it feels nice to have a month designated to them, especially because I feel like a lot of, I feel like they kind of go overlooked, like Middle Easterns really get overlooked. It's kind of grouped into like, they're not really grouped into anything, actually. So I think it's good and really good timing to have an acknowledgement of them at this time. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? My comment on this resolution is we are a diverse district. We are a diverse country and we have to find that intersectionality that Mr. Phillips spoke of. And we also have to shine a light on those who are the most marginalized, which our student trustee spoke of. So I think that we not only need to pass resolutions like this, but we need to take those ideas into the classrooms and onto the school sites. I am complete. We are now moving on to Resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, sixty-six.
Point of order.
Oh, we didn't take a vote. Ah, I got it. All right, let's take a vote. All right, here we go. Trustee Pal Carr.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdouka Parro.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Now we are moving on to Resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, six, Dolores Herta Day. Ms. Forrest, this is your item, please.
Yes, thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Yes, thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to honor Dolores Huerta, a national civil rights and labor leader. And be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs the superintendent and all district staff to support lessons and activities that teach about the life and struggles of Dolores Huerta. And to conduct celebrations honoring her life as a powerful force for social justice and empowerment for all.
Thank you very much. Board, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir.
Um, even though I highly doubt she is listening, uh, I would like to thank her uh, Dolores Huerta for being a role model. Um, and a role model not just for women, uh, but also a role model uh, for men. Um, she's a role model, period. She is a great person. And she has done tremendous work um, past um, and present, uh, and will continue to do so. Uh, so I just want to honor uh, that legacy uh, and give thanks for the fact that it's continuing.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? My comment is I met her twice and every time that I met her, she has an amazing spirit of good trouble. She is a walking example of good trouble and it was amazing to see her come in. She's real small. She's real tiny. So I was very tall over her, but her spirit was seven feet tall. And the way that she spoke about not only the past, but the present and the future. And the need to continue to make good trouble and continue to turn over tables and continue to speak truth to power. It was absolutely amazing. So if you ever have a chance to meet her, don't miss that opportunity. Um, if you have a chance to research, well, we all have a chance to research about her and to um, look at all the amazing feats that she has done as a civil rights leader. It's, it's a great legacy that she's creating. I am complete. Uh, huh, vote. Here we go. To the vote. Trustee Pal Kar.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdugah Parvov.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much, board. We are now moving on to resolution numbers uh, resolution number two, three, two, four, six, seven is item number sixteen on the agenda, National Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month. Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District hereby proclaims April twenty twenty four as National Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month.
Thank you, board. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move resolution two, three, two, four, dash, six, seven, National Bilingual Multi- Multilingual Advocacy Learner Advocacy Month.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Board, any comments? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Phillips and work our way this way. Mr. Phillips, go ahead.
I have s- seven seconds. I was gonna try to do it. Um, I have said this before, uh, I think that Stewart, um, and I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about Stewart because it's on subject. Um, I think that Stewart has struggled that DLI program for quite some time. Um, and different things have been tried over different superintendents uh, to boost that program, but it continues to struggle. I don't see how that program honestly is sustainable. Um, based on what I know to have happened in the past and trying to get it to move forward. But at the same time, I don't think that it's appropriate to announce that a program is being canceled after the transfer deadline. That to me just doesn't seem fair. So if that happened, um, I would request or do request that the staff actually look into that.
Thank you so much, trustee Phillips. We are now moving to trustee Pal Kar and then we'll work our way around. Trustee Pal Kar.
Okay, well, um, initially I did just want to say, I wanted to echo the importance of um, languages in our community being, being multilingual myself is it's just, it's a great, great, great connector. You're able to like communicate with people from various different communities and countries and it's just, it leads to such an expansive mindset. So, I would like to um, really encourage the board to support language curriculums, maybe expanding it, supporting it um, with the DLI program. If there's a way to just provide students with extra support in um, really fostering these languages. It's just so important and I really, I really do think that this is such a, such an um, a mind expander for things and especially something that our students in our district could benefit from. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Abdugah Parvov.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree with both um, trustee Phillips and trustee Pal Kar. I think that um, I do also want to reiterate with all these people came here today to talk about, about the DHL program, I mean, DHI program at um, Stewart. Yeah, Stewart. Um, because clearly these little kids are coming because it matters to them. Like, I'm sure this is like past their bedtime or something. And like so many of them like had the courage to come up here and express their feelings. Like, I don't know what happened, has happened in the past, but that doesn't matter. Like, we should focus on improving it now. Um, and also we had like a previous presentation at one of our meetings about like, um, like um, like having like more classes at the elementary level for like language immersion, especially for students who are like uh, international students. So if we're going to recognize that that's important, how can we like not also recognize how learning Spanish is also important and other languages is also important in the same way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Abdugah Parvov. We are now moving to trustee Reckler. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I don't want to take up this time talking about Stewart, but I do want to just say in case board comments get cut that the board is informed exactly on what's going on there and also to schedule a session on what the vision is around DLI, because I'm not sure we have one. Um, so I'll just stop there with that. As far as knowing two languages or multiple languages, I mean, to me it's imperative that everybody knows at least another language fluently. This is especially Spanish and Mandarin. I mean, this is the way that the world is going. And if, there's besides English, Spanish and Mandarin, three of the most popular languages. And in order to really have culturally competent students that can, are globally competent, they need to speak more than one language or and understand different cultures. Uh, it's, it's direly important and it's something that I missed out on as a child because my mom's language wasn't taught to me because they wanted to Americanize. So, you know, we've come such a long way and I want to see that supported in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian?
Yes, I just want to echo the same words because it's very important um, to, you know, with languages. So, um, and like Stewart, you know, seeing things, um, seeing the language are, are, are there, you know, for our students so they can learn. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm for all of that. So, uh, yes, I echo the same words with everybody uh, saying up here on the diocese. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um, C A O Johnson, if we could schedule a DLI specific study session to where we are bringing back all of our DLI programs, creating and talking about or going over the vision that we have for DLI and the next steps and looking at specific programs. I think that that would be valuable. Thank you so much. Um, thank you everyone for your comments. I don't have anything to add. I think that we are um, we have all spoken to the DLI program and to multilingual and how important it is for our students. I am complete. We are now moving on. Nope, vote. Alright, here we go. Trustee Pal Kar, your vote, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdugah Parvov, your vote, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. Now we're moving on to agenda item B seventeen, resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, six, eight, Adult Education Week. Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the West Contra Costa Unified School District does hereby proclaim the week of April seventh, twenty twenty four through April thirteenth, twenty twenty four, Adult Education Week. And salutes the administration, teachers and students of the West Contra Costa Adult School and honors their efforts and accomplishments.
Thank you so much, board. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move resolution two, three, two, four, dash, six, eight, Adult Education Week.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you so much, board. Are there any comments? We'll go around this way again. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to give kudos to the adult ed teachers uh, and the adult ed students. Uh, once upon a time, uh, I taught a GED class. So I was an adult ed teacher for a moment when I lived out of state. Um, it is extremely important uh, for folks to be able to get back into school, uh, to get uh, their GEDs, but not just that, um, to also better and advance themselves and their families. And adult ed does all of that. So, I'm glad that we have an adult ed program. I'm glad that uh, it is thriving and that we make uh, I believe, good efforts to reach out to the community to participate. So, thank you to everyone who is a teacher or a student or an administrator in that program.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Pal Kar, did I see your hand? No. Trustee Abdugah Parvov. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, um, I think it's really important that we're acknowledging this because I think it's also like a really small section of our district that kind of goes unrecognized. Um, but it's really important because it shows that there is still pathways to education, even if like you drop out or like things happen. I think that's really um, admirable. Um, and kind of came to my mind right now, but speaking of different pathways, I also want to advocate for Vista because that's also a different pathway that people like go to when things don't go their way. Also Gateway. So I just want to keep encouraging having alternative education ways because not everyone um, fits with the traditional learning style. So I want to keep advocating for that and I think this is a great start. But we should also think about Vista and Gateway.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian?
Yes, uh, yes, the adult education is very important. Um, it's, it's a way for adults to get back in, to finish their education so they can move on and do other great things um, down the road. So, you know, when I look at this, I have encouraged so many young people who have basically gave up. But I encourage them to get back in into the uh, educational program that we have in this district. And we have a wonderful, wonderful uh, adult educational program and um, and for all those uh, who teach the adult education, who spend time with those who who are getting back in, trying to make things happen. And I really appreciate that because it, it gives a vehicle for them to move in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So one of the things that I've been most proud of about this district is that it has consistently offered something birth to death, literally. From teeny, teeny kids all the way through the older adult school program. There's always been, even in the most challenging fiscal times, something for every age. Adult education plays a very important role. Whether it's people who are coming back to get a GED or whether it's uh, English language learning for adult newcomers, or whether it's naturalization or auto mechanics or knitting or whatever they offer. It plays an important, inexpensive role in education for the entire community. And I myself took my food service permit at our adult school and it was excellent. And it was as good as anything I got in the fancy hotel school. So it was a great program and anybody who needs to get food service certified, do it through W C C U S D. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all adult educators. Thank you to the adult students. And remember, our adults start at eighteen. So we have students in adult education as young as eighteen, the baby adults. And we have them all the way to probably a hundred years old. So thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you, uh, W C C U S D with your partnership with adult education. I would like to see um, the classes back at the elementary schools. I know that Nystrom used to have an adult education um, class during the day. So, um, when we're in our physical state and we can move a better fiscal state and we can move that, I would love to see that back into our elementary schools. Cause it's there when parents drop their students off, they go right to class too. So I think that adds to our um, number of people participating in adult education um, programs. If you have not seen the adult education at night, I went last year to Richmond. It is an amazing program. Going in there and seeing all the learning that's being done and amazing teachers who some come from school, teaching school during the day to teaching school at night. And it's an amazing thing to watch. So I encourage you all to go to that. I am complete. We are now headed to the vote. Trustee Pal Kar.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdugah Parvov.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving to B eighteen, resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, six, nine, National Public School Month. Ms. Forrest?
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District hereby recognizes April twenty twenty four as Public Schools Month and urges communities and educational institutions to appropriately observe the efforts of students, teachers and administrators of the public school system.
Thank you so much. And pardon me, Director Forrest, not Ms. Forrest, Director Forrest. Thank you. Uh, board, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Board, are there any comments? Hey, trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I want to take this opportunity to recognize all of our schools. Um, but I want to point out two schools in particular. Um, and those two schools are Vista Virtual and the Mandarin School. Um, both of those schools um, have done a great job. Both of those schools have had wait lists. Um, and both of those schools need to be able to thrive and and move forward and continue to thrive. And in all honesty and transparency, I'm a Vista Virtual parent as well. Um, I think the district needs to recognize when it has done a good thing. And sometimes when we've done a good thing, the best thing that we can do is actually get out of the way uh, and let it continue to thrive. Some of the things that I have heard regarding the Mandarin School and Vista Virtual, um, I think uh, could actually hurt those schools, schools that have wait lists. We're talking about uh, enrollment going down and losing, you know, ADA and all of those things. Um, but we have two really good programs that we're messing with. Um, and sometimes I think this district is so used to sometimes, it's so used to messing up that it doesn't get it when it's doing something good. And I think that may very well be what's happening with Vista Virtual um, and the Mandarin School. The district is doing something good. There's no reason to change things when they are not broken.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Sorry, my comment's very simple. Thank you to all the public schools um, in W C C U S D. You're the reason why we sit here. We sit here to serve you. We sit, sit here to serve those parents and students who don't have a choice. That this is their district. These are their neighborhood schools. So we work to make sure that we are centering their experience and what we want them to um, come out with after thirteen years. So, thank you to all those who choose W C C U S D. And thank you to all of those who choose our public schools. I am complete. and thank you to all of those who choose our public schools. I am complete. To the vote. Trustee Pal Car.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Abdukapar, sorry, Abdukaparvo.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Sorry, I skipped you, Trustee Phillips, my bad. Trustee Phillips?
It's okay. Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to B nineteen, resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, seventy, School Library Month. Uh, Director Forrest?
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of West Contra Costa Unified School District does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty four as School Library Month in all of West Contra Costa Unified School District, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of West Contra Costa to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month.
Thank you so very, uh, much, Director Forrest. Board, is there a motion? I'll move Resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, seventy, School Library Month. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Uh, Board, are there comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I wanna rephrase the last thing I said. I think that this district is so used to things not working the way we want it to work, that sometimes when it is working correctly, we still think we have to do something. Um, we still think that we have to play with things and change things, and that's not true. What I was trying to say is that Vista and the Mandarin School are working, and they are not broken, so we don't need to be trying to fix them. They are working and they are actually shining examples of how you can create a new program, our new programs, and actually generate new excitement, um, in your schools. So it's a little clearer. I spoke about communication earlier. And on School Library Month, I will have to come back later and fit that in because it is extremely important, but I wanted to clarify my last statement. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Are there any other comments? Um, I have a comment. This is a very important resolution. Um, it, as someone who started out and struggled to learn to read, uh, the, this library was my savior. I, uh, you don't know about Dewey Decimal System if you're of a certain age, but I had to learn the Dewey Decimal System in a shelf library books, and it was great. It was a great experience. It immersed me into books, um, which is absolutely amazing. So please thank your librarian. Please go and use your public library. Please use the, the school libraries. And in an age where people are banning books, we have to band together to say no. No book should be banned. Every book should be read and every book should be absorbed because that is the knowledge. Um, if you haven't seen, uh, TV shows like Reading Rainbow, I suggest you look at them. They talk about books. It's amazing. Um, and again, go to your local library and get a library card and use it. I am complete. Board, to the vote. Before I go to that vote, I need to ask the Board a question. Did we vote on Poetry Month? We did. Some of us say no, some of us say yes. We don't know if we voted on it. So we're gonna go back and vote on the poetry one? Just, we didn't do it? Okay. Just to make sure. So we're gonna roll backwards and we're gonna vote on the poetry one. Ms. Rosa, did we have a, we had a motion? And we had a second. So the first vote I'm gonna ask was for poetry, okay? Because I don't think we did it. So Trustee Pal Car, your vote for the poetry resolution?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdukaparvo, your vote for the poetry?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips for poetry?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler for poetry?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian for poetry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes for poetry. Now we're gonna go to School Library Month. Trustee Pal Car for library?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdukaparvo?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Oh, nope, Trustee Christian, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. All right, now we are moving on to consent items. Are there any items that we're gonna pull? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, C eight, approval of fundraising activities and C nine contracts, please.
Both of those in their entirety?
Yes, please. I'll be, I'll be quick.
Go ahead. I cut you off. What did you say?
Yes, I'll be quick with them.
Okay, thank you so very much. Any other items to be pulled? Trustee Abdukaparvo?
Well, I had a question. Well, can you define pulled? Because I thought it meant like taken off the agenda, but I remember last time something was pulled, but then it was brought back at the end. Is that what it is?
Yeah, so when we're saying pull something off the consent item, we're saying we're gonna pull it off so it doesn't go to like, yes, everybody agrees with it, but we're gonna pull it off to talk about it at the very back of the agenda, and then we'll take a vote because we're pulling it specifically off. So consent item is like, we look at it and we're like, yo, okay, I agree with that. We don't have to have a conversation about it. But if we wanna have a conversation about it, we'll pull it off and put it at the back.
Um, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other items to be pulled? Nope. Board, can I have a motion? To approve the consent items with items eight and nine pulled?
I'll go ahead and move consent with eight and nine pulled for discussion.
Thank you. Is there a sec, or is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Board, let's go straight to the vote. Trustee Pal Car.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Abdukaparvo.
I've seen.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to item D, the Superintendent Communication Report.
Cool. Okay, um, so we have two parts of the, um, Superintendent's Report. Um, first, we're going to just have an overview of some things happening, and then our student trustees will be reporting out this evening. Um, so could we pull up? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, first slide. Second, thank you. So, um, we want to just thank all of our administrative professionals this week. So let's give them a hand right now. Um, today was the official celebration, but they can be celebrated all week long. So if you did forget, please, um, either call, show up with flowers, candies, Starbucks gift cards for your administrative professionals. And in our district, that means our office managers, our secretaries, our admin techs, all of those wonderful people that support our school sites and our departments. So, um, thank you for your dedication to student achievement and for all your support. So thank you. Next slide. Um, next we have some events that are coming up. We have our seventeenth Annual Transition and Special Education Resource Fair. This is an annual event. Just, it's a wonderful event for parents of children with special needs, but to specifically come out and learn about the offerings, um, specifically for our students that are eighteen, I wanna say eighteen to, um, twenty-two. And it will be held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from ten to twelve thirty PM at the Vista Hills Education Center. Um, we also have our WCCUSD chess tournament. It's also going to be on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at Dejounte Middle School, and it is from ten thirty to two o'clock. Next slide. And now I'm going to turn this over to our Sopa Director, Catherine Fleischman, to review.
Thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson. Um, I want to, uh, or we want to remind our community that April is Autism Acceptance Month. Um, as you see on this slide here, uh, neurodiversity is, uh, very real, um, and it is just as real as any other type of diversity that we have, um, here in our very diverse, uh, very diverse community, excuse me. Um, like any other aspect, the human brain functions in many different ways and is, it, it isn't, all of our human brains are not the same, and there's diversity among all of us. Next slide, please. Um, just some, some key points, um, uh, some fundamental truths, as I like to talk about. Um, nerd, neurodiversity is biodiversity. Um, like I said, just like any other part of our human body, the brain is a diverse, um, organ. Um, peoples, people whose neuro, neurology differs from dominant societal norms are described as neurodivergent. That's a really important point to make, um, and that is that, um, uh, again, the neurology, the way that the brain work doesn't always function the same way. And for folks who, um, it doesn't align with our societal norms, are, are thought of as, and described as neurodivergent, and autism is just one form of neurodivergence. Um, there's some graphics there for, for future, um, uh, reference. I'm not gonna talk through all of those right now because there's a great deal of, um, information there. Um, next slide, please. Um, also wanna just acknowledge that the, um, the way in which we talk about autism, the way in which we, um, uh, acknowledge autism has grown and shifted and changed, like many other things. Um, there are certain, uh, emblems and, and, um, insignia that have been, uh, initially and potentially, um, universally accepted that have been challenged. And so that's what this slide is there is to acknowledge, um, that there have been challenges and, um, uh, an evolving conversation around the representation of people with autism. Next slide, please. Um, and this, uh, last slide is just to acknowledge a couple of things. If you look at the bottom right, um, it shows one type of spectrum, a straight line spectrum. Um, but it's to acknowledge that the autism spectrum isn't just a straight line spectrum because it is a spectrum that moves in many different directions. And so that, that bottom right graphic, um, in many ways represents the autism spectrum, uh, much more, uh, appropriately. And also just to acknowledge that, um, like any other subgroup of our, um, diverse community, people with autism have succeeded in, in all sorts of fields and, uh, contributed tremendously, um, to many different fields. Um, uh, just as any other subgroup has. So, um, that's the, the purpose of this slide here. Um, and that, uh, concludes, um, the conversation here around, uh, autism awareness. Um, just a, a, a quick introduction and, and a much longer and very important conversation that we need to continue to have. I'm complete.
Thank you. Um, next, we just wanna acknowledge, um, our administrators. Association of California School Administrators is a large organization. Um, it represents all of the administrators in the state of California. And, um, every district that has a charter, um, recognizes their own local winners. But then, um, for West Contra Costa, we're part of the, um, Region Six, which represents Alameda County and Contra Costa County. And so these are our winners, and I just want to read them off by name. So for Secondary Principal of Richmond High, we have Rosio Reyes. Middle grades principal, um, from Soskins, um, Betty Reed Soskins. We have Jay Irving, Elementary Principal, who, and now, um, Executive Director for, um, Area One, Catherine Acosta Verpraskas. Um, Secondary Co-Administrator, um, of Betty Reed Soskins, Jason Lau. And our Business Services Administrator, our CBO, Kim Moses. And I wanna highlight that she not only won for our district, but she won for the entire region of Region Six. So we wanna congratulate her. And Curriculum and Instruction Administrator, um, our Science Coordinator, um, John Eawaki. And Continuation Ed Options Administrator for, um, Phil Johnson, who is the Principal of Greenwood Academy. So those are our winners, and we just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate them this evening. Next slide. At end of slide, so.
Um, we can do questions after the students' report. So we'll wait and we'll get the students' report, and then we'll do questions as a board.
So, um, now I'm gonna turn it over to our wonderful student trustees to, um, present their report for this month.
Okay, um, good evening to all. I am Student Trustee Pal Car. And tonight, me and Trustee Abdukaparov will be presenting our report on Students' Voice for Quality Education and how it relates to funding.
So our trustee report aims to enhance the school experience through targeted funding, and because this has been a huge topic for discussion as of lately. So we first start by identifying the specific areas within schools that suffer due to inadequate funding. So by gathering ample information, we can discern where funds should be directed for maximum impact according to student priorities.
Um, could you go back to the previous slide? Thank you. Um, okay, so in addition to identifying areas lacking adequate funding, our commitment extended to finding viable solutions. Uh, we aim to think through each solution meticulously to create a specific and narrow list for maximum impact. Throughout our report, we were dedicated to exploring, um, all different types of solutions, including reallocations of funds and seeking out potential partners, whether they be local businesses, community organizations, or governmental agencies. Overall, we wanted to present a comprehensive set of pathways to empower schools to thrive and provide students with all the resources they need.
Excellent. Thank you. So we start off by surveying, um, students and principals. So we had a thorough conversation with all student congress members to gain insights from our student representatives, and our goal was to gather diverse perspectives, um, on the issue of funding at different levels. Um, their input was invaluable in understanding the various challenges faced due to inadequate funding. For example, several students expressed their dissatisfaction with the unsanitary conditions of the restrooms. Um, actually, Megan was one of them that really stood for that, and they came in today to, um, reiterate that point, which I wanted to, um, note and say that was cool. Um, and they also think that the new technologies that have been implemented were unnecessary. So to quote one student from Hercules High on our forms, they said, um, "Why did our school buy permythium boards? There's usually one for every class, even though we have whiteboards," end quote. This made students feel like the district's priorities were out of order. And to ensure a comprehensive view of the issue, we extended our outreach efforts. So we created forms for both students and principals, aiming to gather perspectives from all different stakeholders. And the questions were carefully crafted to pinpoint the areas where funding was lacking the most. Um, and we aim to understand how these funding gaps correlate with the student needs and experiences. So through this process, we gained a deeper understanding of the specific areas where student shortage, funding shortages have the most significant impact.
Um, so in addition to collecting data, we took, um, proactive steps to gain a deeper understanding of our school's budgetary process and processes. Um, this involved reaching out to the Finance Committee and school principals. While our work on the panel provided a brief, um, introduction to our district's budget, we needed to delve deeper to properly interpret our data. We recognized the importance of understanding how our school's budget functions. Therefore, we reached out to gain insights into the intricacies and expenditure. Engaging with the Finance Committee allowed us to see actual numbers and comprehend the realm of possibilities. Through our meetings, we got a more personalized idea of different schools' data and how each school handles their finances or what committees they need to go through.
So through this analysis, we identified reoccurring themes and priorities that range from the need to provide more resources for sports to enhancing the hygiene standards on our campuses, such as renewing our bathrooms. So these challenges hold significance in our organizational ecosystem because it shows where students require and desire from their, um, school experience. With this information, we could cultivate appropriate solutions. So addressing these issues isn't just about improving specific aspects. It's about enhancing the overall quality of life and productivity within our community.
And after engaging directly with the Finance Committee of the Board and conducting Oh.
Can you go back to the last slide? Sorry, we'll say next slide when we want you to move. I'm so sorry.
Okay, um, so after engaging directly with the Finance Committee of the Board and conducting personal interactions with school principals and studies, and students, we narrowed down the, the data into, um, key findings, keeping in mind the processes we had learned about how money is allocated and distributed within our district. And this allowed us to provide a comprehensive overview of the financial landscape of our schools. Throughout the process, we consistently referred back to the student data to ensure our solutions were grounded in the needs of students, and we ensured that our proposed solutions aligned with the district's guidelines and policies. And by adhering to the established frameworks, we aim to create solutions that were not only effective, but also feasible. By the end, we developed a range of possible solutions to, to address the identified challenges.
Next slide. Okay, so now I wanna move on to reviewing the data that we collected. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, so this data infographic represents the first priority of students across various categories. So let's break down this analysis. So as you can see, the highest percentage of students chose sports as their first priority. So this indicates a significant interest or concern among students regarding sports-related activities, which could include access to facilities, equipment, coaching staff, or or opportunities for participation in sport program. One student stated that, quote, "I think that sports at our schools are very important, and it helps students bond with each other and pursue new things. Many sports like volleyball, soccer, and basketball are very popular at our school, but it's hard to find a coach since it's volunteer-based. If we can put funding towards sports, things like the boys' volleyball team won't be have to be canceled again. I know that many of my friends were disappointed that they couldn't get a chance to try volleyball," end quote. So sports clearly create community for students, especially if they have trouble making friends, along with encouraging a healthy lifestyle. So it's crucial to part of the school experience. So the next highest priority of students was campus-related issues. So this could encompass a wide range of concerns, such as campus safety, cleanliness, infrastructure improvements, or environmental sustainability efforts. Many students expressed their disdain for unsanitary conditions of several areas on their campus, along with wanting to have more sustainable practices. And one third of and one fifth of our students identified staffing as their main priority. This suggests that students are concerned with the quality and quantity of teaching staff, which obviously is coming to be a big issue in our schools, that there's a lot of lack of funding. And it shows within the students because one student on our form said, quote, "I believe it's important to prioritize funding staff and school supplies over clubs and sports. Although it adds to the student experience, we should make sure that they're getting the proper education before extracurriculars. As a senior, I've had to struggle with teachers, which greatly impacted my learning," end quote. Funding to address this issue could include hiring more teachers, counselors, support staff and administrators to reduce class sizes, provide individualized attention, and improve the overall student support services. And speaking of school supplies, it ranked fourth as a priority among students. This can include concerns about access to necessary educational materials, such as textbooks, notebooks, technol- technology devices, or other resources essential to learning. And a smaller percentage of students prioritize electives, indicating a interest in expanding or improving elective course offerings within the curriculum. So many students stated that electives would greatly benefit them as it would give them the opportunity to discover what they enjoy before going into a certain field. And I also want to note that the most popular elective was cooking. We saw that so many times, and a lot of people talked about how they appreciate Mrs. Mann. I don't know who that is, but I do want to highlight whoever that is because they clearly made an impact. And the other category encompasses things like study trips, which two people voted for, events like prom, which three people advocated for, special education, one person advocated for, and language classes for bilingual students, which two people advocated for. And the lowest percentage, but not the least important, identified school lunch as their first priority. So however, this is the lowest. I know that school lunch is widely discussed among students, and it's crucial because it affects reflects students' concern about nutrition and food accessibility. So I often hear complaints from my peers and members from student congress who feel like there isn't much variety and it isn't an enjoyable lunch. So funding this area could support initiatives such as improving the quality of school meals, expanding meal options, and addressing food insecurity among students. So overall, this analysis provides valuable insights into the priorities and preferences of students, which can inform decision-making processes for school admin, policymakers, and other people in addressing student needs and improving the educational experience. Next slide.
So in that same survey distributed to students, we aimed to understand their secondary priorities following their primary choice, which overwhelmingly represented sports. By exploring the second most important aspect to students, we sought to discern if there were if there was a clear consensus on additional areas of significance or if the range was diverse. So while sports remained a prominent choice for students as their second priority, the largest consensus emerged for improvements related to the campus environment. One one student expressed the desire for more outdoor spaces with adequate shade to shade and rain cover, highlighting the need for enhancement beyond indoor facilities. To quote one, to quote that student, they said, "It would be nice to have more shade rain cover and just more spots to be outside rather than just being inside." Additionally, students raised concerns about the comfort level within classrooms, specifically mentioning the need for better heating and air conditioning systems. Upon closer examination of the data, we identified a group of students whose perspectives were underrepresented in the initial analysis. These students emphasized the importance of a more expansive curriculum with a notable with a notable majority advocating for the introduction of, again, cooking classes. Next slide.
So these quotes echo the previous points we made about the priorities of students. So we're going to read out a couple of them. So the one I wanted to read out says, quote, "I also want to focus on campus because cleanliness and the amount of safety a student feels in their school can be a big drive in academic success. Having a clean and well-maintained campus will discourage students from littering because they won't see pollution elsewhere that can validate their actions. There are also fights, vaping, and smoking that I feel should be more scrutinized. They don't make me feel safe, and it sucks to see that the top priority of our school isn't even directed at the well-being or safety," end quote.
Another student says, "This lack of academic support hinders developing students from finding their true potential and passion in learning. There were a few academic programs at our schools years ago, such as math counts, science, Olympiad, or AMC, but had to unfortunately get cut because of a lack of funding. As an avid learner myself, it'd bring me and others who share the same drive for learning great joy if we could have a broader range of academic opportunities." Next slide. Through our survey distributed to principals, a significant finding emerged regarding the allocation of funding within our schools. A striking forty percent of principals identified the second, let me. Identified the, sorry, I just need to, okay, the general FTE and LCFF as lacking adequate funding. This observation stands out as an overwhelming majority as it doubles the percentage of other categories consistently mentioned, which hovered around twenty percent. Next slide.
So now we want to talk about the quotes that principals provided us with where they think that the school needs more funds. So one principal stated that, quote, "Counselors, really a shift in caseload numbers. Staffing, not dramatically, but the lower class sizes would be beneficial and give our students more options," period. Instructional support slash TOSA. I think to really improve, to really move the needle, you need adult supporting in and out of classrooms. Elementary principals need another admin on site just to help with the IPEs alone. So this principal is clearly talking about how they think staffing could improve the overall experience and the flow of their school. So I did want to echo their thoughts.
To echo, the Greenwood principal says, "Greenwood students deserve the right to have the same sports and activities as other high schools. We need money to support our enrichment classes and sports. Also, more support with mental health issues, therapy, SEL, and conflict mediation."
No, oh, no. Yeah, so now we were transitioning to possible solutions to align the school district's funding with these student priorities, such as sports, campus improvement, staffing, and school supplies. Next slide.
Addressing attendance. During our meeting with finance officials, we learned about the direct correlation between attendance and the funding in our schools that they receive each day. Our analysis of of data from online schooling from the COVID period revealed a significant reference points, our highest attendance rates. Since then, absenteeism has increased. We propose implementing measures such as allowing students to attend classes via Zoom when they're sick. While acknowledging that not all students will comply, those who do could contribute significantly to our district's finances.
So partnerships. Partnerships with businesses and corporations can help supplement existing funding and support initiatives aligned with student priorities. For example, the Richmond Promise and Donors Choose have ways to request funding or resources. And additionally, neighborhood councils and local community colleges typically hold fundraisers that and supply drives to support local schools and educators. So possibly getting involved with them could benefit us. And there's also a lot of local organizations, such as West County Reads, have volunteered with them, amazing, that support educators by providing a multitude of free books for classrooms. And they're very sustainable because they're all donated by people from the community. And there's also a lot of city Rotarys that I'm sure that would be willing to support our district. And leveraging these collaborator collaborations present an intriguing opportunity to save funds. By strategically reallocating these savings, we can effectively adjust various issues across our district and current ensuring that resources are distributed where they're needed most.
Fundraisers. We believe that organizing fundraisers, whether at a district level or within individual schools, could be highly effective. If schools chose to conduct their own fundraisers, they could then reallocate the processes directly back into their students and schools. From parent donations to bake sales, car washes, or fundraiser dances, there are numerous possibilities for fundraising initiatives that could possibly make an impact on our school's financial resources. Publicizing the finance committee. So to address public concern and confusion regarding assumptions about the availability of additional funds, we propose taking proactive steps to increase transparency. One one effective measure would be to publish the yearly budget on the WCCUST website. By making this information readily accessible to the public, we can provide clarity on how funds are allocated and utilized within our district. This trans- this transparent approach not only fosters trust and accountability, but also empowers people to make informed decisions and engage in constructive dialogue about our financial priorities and challenges.
So grants can be an excellent way, as we all know, to support initiatives aligned with student priorities. For example, seeking grants that are specifically aimed at enhancing sports programs within the district could fund the the purchase of new sports equipments, upgrade athletic facilities, and the hiring of qualified coaches. Because as we know, students clearly really want to prioritize sports. As they previously stated, that's really hard to find coaches because it's volunteer-based. It seems like not a lot of people are willing, so grants could tackle this issue. And campus is another area where people have prior showed prior their prioritization. So renovation and beautification grants could include landscaping enhancements, outdoor seating areas, and installment of public art, and which creates a more inviting learning environment for student and staffs. So I also want to recommend that we pursue graphs that prioritize staff development and retention initiatives to fund professional development opportunities for teachers and staff mentorship programs and incentives to attract and retain talented educators. So investing in staff development can improve teaching quality and job satisfaction, ultimately benefiting student learning outcomes. There are several different grants to choose from, and a good website that I've been looking at to find them would be California Grant Watch. So specifically applying and utilizing these grants in these areas can help aid and, you know, alleviate the funding crisis while simultaneously enhancing the quality of education and support services provided to students. I also want to recognize that there are like jobs within the district that do have to do this, like find partnerships and do have to find grants. So I do want to like highlight those positions. I also learned a lot from our All Student Congress advisor, Lawls, who previously had a job like this where they did have to find communities to partner with and create mutual benefits. So I think that having more roles like that does immense good because I could see how hard they work and how much it pays off and how passionate they are. So I did want to reiterate that. So our last suggestion is holding school drives. So setting up drives for resources in different community hubs or in schools themselves with the most foot traffic can help collect the necessities for students because lots of people have excess items that I'm sure that they would like to get rid of. And additionally, it's a very sustainable practice because it promotes the repurchasing of items that otherwise would have been discarded. Lastly, in general, we would like to say that continuously monitoring and evaluating the impact of funding decisions on student outcomes and adjust priorities and allocations as needed to ensure that resources are effectively meeting the needs of students and enhancing their educational experience would be the way to go. Because overall, we are doing, we are trying to make this district work for students. So I think that continuously checking that their priorities are aligned with how we're spending our money is really important. Next slide, please.
General consensus. Next slide. So this is our summary and what we hope to see. After identifying reoccurring themes and areas of concern, we found consistent patterns in the data. The numbers overwhelmingly represented the following groups. The administrators' concerns. So school officials were concerned on staffing mostly. This includes hiring long-term professionals, retaining counselors, and providing academic support to ensure a robust educational environment. Students' concerns. Sports and clubs. Students expressed a need for adequate support and resources for sports and clubs, including providing space, stability, and overall support to foster a vibrant extracurricular environment. The campuses were also at the head of student priorities. The students expressed a desire to feel safe and provided for on their campus, indicating a need for overall improvements in campus infrastructure and safety measures to enhance their overall well-being and academic experience. From our experience in student government, we found curriculum to be an urgent issue. Among student representatives from a variety of schools, there is a strong emphasis on focusing on electives that are more engaging for students and on support in the language learner's curriculum. Additionally, there is a need for enhancing college preparation resources and ensuring access to academic materials and resources that support student learning.
So to summarize our suggestions, forging partnerships with local businesses, corporations, and community organizations. Through this, schools can access additional resources, funding, and support along with financial assistance, in-kind donations, and opportunities for collaboration, which can help alleviate the strain on school budgets and address funding gaps. So seeking grants from community-based organizations, foundations, and government agencies can also provide schools with additional funding opportunities, support specific programs, initiatives, and projects. So also increasing transparency around the school's finance committees, activities, and decision-making processes can build trust and encourage community engagement. And it's really important to get the feedback from the families because a lot of them might not know what's going on with the funding committee. Like, I didn't even know that was open to the public. And I think that people can bring a lot of their useful suggestions, especially because it impacts them directly. And so publicizing the community's efforts and inviting input from the people who are directly impacted, schools can foster a sense of ownership and accountability. And it leads to more effective financial management and resource allocation. Okay, so fundraisers and school drives generate revenue and essential resources to support school operations, programs, and activities. So by encouraging students, parents, teachers, and community members to participate in funding efforts, schools can raise money, build community spirit, and also address funding challenges in a sustainable and impactful way. So overall, implementing a combination of these strategies and initiatives, schools can diversify their funding sources, which I know we already have a lot of different funding sources. But I think that looking for additional ways can never hurt. And maximize available resources and address funding challenges in a proactive and sustainable manner, ultimately enhancing school experience and fostering a community of support and engagement. So that's all we have for you today. So thank you for your time. I hope we could shed some light on what's going on in our schools, what students care about, and hopefully provide some sort of new solutions. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your thorough report. And now I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so very much. That was really good. And really good is an understatement. It was very informative. It was very spot-on. So thank you very much for that, and I can't wait to see your next report. Board, it is nine fifty-two. We're going to have to extend. I don't think that we will need to extend all the way to eleven thirty, but I would like to put eleven thirty as our end time. So can I get a motion to, we're halfway through the agenda. We have four more items. Can I get a motion to extend to eleven thirty?
Yes, I moved to eleven thirty.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. Board, let's take the vote to extend to eleven thirty with the hope that we won't go to eleven thirty. Trustee Pau Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Abdukaparov.
Outstanding.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much, board. We're gonna go back to questions for the superintendent report. We're gonna do three questions superintendent report, including the student trustee report. So if you have questions, we'll do three questions. Are there any questions? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
My first question. Excuse me, my first question is to the student trustees. Did you discuss any advanced programs like GATE?
Can you expand on your question, please?
Um. Was there any discussion about harder or more advanced academic programs?
Um, there was a lot of requests for more A P support and A P test testing support. Uh, we know that students in Penole Valley are really enthusiastic about their I B program. But as far as um kind of curriculum-wise, what students wanted was more support to suc- succeed in college and hopefully not have that much of an academic gap.
Thank you. My next question is to director Fleishman. The page that you showed uh with all of the individuals who have autism was enlightening. Do we do anything or what do we do to let students know whether they're autistic students or students with other um um issues or whatever it is that they're, wh- wh- what do we do to let those students know that there are people who have the same experience as you? And they're doing great because the, and I'm asking because that page that you showed, that slide that you showed, it was really great. What do we do to recreate that district-wide, not just for autistic students, but students, period?
Uh, thank you, trustee Phillips. Um, excellent question. Um, that slide, uh many of those uh images and things that were were included in that slide deck um actually came from um one of our uh autism full inclusion programs. So that's that's directly from what was shared with a group of autis- autistic students. Um, so that particular example was shared with students for whom they may have similar, I don't want, I want to be careful saying the same experience because like we said, it's it's a, it's a, it's a spectrum, so similar similar experiences and and um, so that's one example of where it's shared with students. It's sorry, I got a little feedback there. Um, it's definitely something I think across our whole system that we can put energy and and time into and in in uh bringing forth representation. We know representation matters um for all subgroups, particularly those that have been uh historically marginalized, so it's something that we can put energy into um elevating those stories.
Thank you, I I think that's really cool. Um, and then my last question, I'm not sure who this question is for. Um. Maybe it's for the C A O. Um. So context for the question, the students were talking about funding and how they believe that district funding could be better allocated to serve student needs. What role do s- do students have in the L cap process? And I'm asking because like while they were talking, that's what I was hearing, right? So what is their space, whether it's these students as trustees or whether it's the Congress? What role do they have in that process?
Um, so I'll just be transparent. Right now, I don't, I do know in the past we did have students that served on the D L cap. Currently, I don't think we have students that serve on the D L cap. But um through our PACs, um if our PACs have students that serve on those PACs, they give recommendations to, for example, um M D A C, um specifically S S C. We get recommendations from all those and A PAC, we get recommendations from all those PACs. So we may get some student voice, but specifically um when we're doing the recommendations to the L cap, it's coming mainly from our D L cap. But our D L cap gets recommendations from all of those different PACs. So um that is something I can look into to find out if some of our schools do have student representatives.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Phillips. Are there any other questions from the board? Trustee Phil. Thank you, trustee Phillips. Are there any other questions from the board? Go ahead, trustee Christian.
All I was just gonna say is, uh, great job to student trustees for delivering that information and the very like on a lot of areas. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I have two questions. Uh, student trust, I'm sorry, are there any other questions before I ask mine? Nope. Student trustees, what would you want to see from your fellow board members? What do you want to see from us? What do you want us to do next? What do you want to see from us? Is there something that you would like to see agendized? Is there other steps that you would like to see your fellow colleagues take? Because we're a, we're a policymaking uh board. So what would you like to see? And if you don't know, don't worry about it, you can come back and tell us, but that's the question I would have.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, um, and I think it's subject to change. Um, I think for now, like, like I said, they continuously checking that our priorities are in line with the student um, the student voice because I feel like sometimes forms get submitted and people don't really look at what students are saying, and especially as a student in the district, it's easier um to really know where things are um have the most like discussion, even if they're not like recorded on forums. So I think like try and identify disparities more often, like especially like, I think it's just so odd to me how so many students um say that they don't like Promethean boys and they're not being used um just to circle back and, but then all these teachers saying that they're amazing and they're never used. So I think maybe continuously having checks to see like, how is this working like actually? Like I think I know that some board members like actually like visit the schools, which I would like to encourage more. There's like plenty of different ways to approach this topic, but I think starting from there, actually understanding like what students want um, I think is a really good first step. And then moving from there, like maybe having like more meetings about like what students think, because I know like we don't really like hear what finance committee does unless we ask. Um, or i- if they come, finance committee comes to us, like the board with um reports like or like anything, like we don't really have the context, so it's hard to like provide our insights. Um, so I think just more transparency, more um communication um is a first, a good first step, but I can, I think there's a lot of ways that I can, we can approach that, and I think we might have to come back to that, so, yeah.
Um, I also, I agree, I think that, well, first of all, really good question. Um, there are multiple points to hit and we will probably come back and address it, but just off the top of my head, I I would like to see more um, more student advocacy and listening to those students that advocate, just because I think that, I mean, we sit on this board to be kind of um to serve for your guys' conch conscious when you vote, when you take a vote, but I feel as if a lot of times after we ask for clarification on things, you know, at the end of the day, the students prefer something, but you're gonna do what makes sense in your adult head. And I would just like to see more weight, more weight to our suggestions and our thoughts and our comments and um more changes, more changes towards what we suggest.
Yeah, um, I completely agree to Rittery at that point. Um, I remember one of the meetings when we were discussing um like the topic of the um demotion of Kibbe Kleiman, one of my friends from Penole Valley was like, do you think that the board will actually like, does like anything that we say will actually change their mind? And I thought to think about it, and I was like, I'm sure that you take into so many things into a lot, into consideration, but sometimes because we don't see the behind the scenes, we don't see these words carrying any weight. And that doesn't only apply to that situation, that can apply to the funding, that can apply to so many other situations. Um, and I can see why like sometimes certain um comments or like feedback, you feel like um isn't, it isn't always a very well-informed, so it might be hard to take that into consideration, but I feel like if we were to like, it would be nice to see like, like Kimberly said, the our, our words and the public's world words like holding weight because I think that it's kind of disheartening to see so many people take their time to come up here and like sometimes with tears in their eyes, like really say how they feel and what's going on and like what they want to see from the board. And then sometimes feel like that doesn't go anywhere. But again, I I'm sure you guys take it all into consideration, just we don't see that, and I feel like maybe seeing that more will help create a more, a better connection between the board and the community members. Um, I hope they made sense. Thank you.
That made a lot of sense.
So.
Go ahead.
Just like, just to echo really in general, like transparency, just because a lot of times students do come up to me and Lola and ask like about certain things that go on during closed session and we can't really say because we don't know what happens, so just more transparency, I think, at the end of the day.
So part of what happens at the board level is board education. That needs to extend to you too, right? So then you'll understand how to communicate back to your peers about things that happen at the board level. So what I'm hearing you say is let us know the why and the how decisions are made and then make sure that we feel the value of and the weight of what we're saying, right? So what you are echoing back to us, so it has to be bilateral communication. That was excellent. Thank you for, thank you so much for that. Um, director Fleishman, I have the same question for you. And if you just want to say, do what they did, fine, but the same question for you is what do we do on sites to, or what do you need from the board for us to ensure that sites understand the the incredible need to go beyond inclusion, right? To go beyond inclusion when we're talking about all students and to make sure that they're aligning their sites to include all students. What can the board do to make sure that that is a value that's seen at the site level? For example, ensuring that all students are represented in the yearbook. For example, making sure that all students are invited to homecoming dances or representing in leadership or at the elementary school level that they have someone to play with, that they are, that um all behavior is communication, right? No matter what you're doing, behavior is your communication. What can we do as a board because we are a policymaking body to ensure that that floats all the way down to our sites?
Uh, thank you, President Smith Folds. Um, really, really intriguing question. It really kind of gets to the heart of the work that that we do every day in special education. Um, honestly, you you mentioned that you're a policymaking body. The policies are there. The policies exist and it's, it's not a matter of policy. What I think the board can do is continue to elevate the stories, until, continue to elevate um and and um publicize um events like our transition fair, like our E S N prom, like our Special Olympics. Um, and also elevate our programs where uh students um with disabilities, students with neurodivergence, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are afforded opportunities that they have a fundamental uh human, civil, and and citizenship right, citizenship rights to, um, and to continue to uplift that ethos that we are not giving anybody anything, we are merely removing barriers to what they already have a right to to exist in the first place. So um as a deci- as a, as a policymaking body, it's my opinion that the policies are already there. It's our job to elevate the stories and to uplift the ethos.
Thank you very much. That was excellent. Um, board, seeing no more questions, we're gonna move on. Thank you very much to um C A O Johnson in the superintendent's report. Thank you very much to director Fleishman, and thank you very much to the student trustees. This was an excellent superintendent's report. We are now moving on to action items. The public will have the opportunity to make public comment on each action item. After staff presentation, the time allotted for public comment on each action item will be no more than ten minutes and one minute per speaker. Action item E one, student discipline. Sorry, director Fleishman, this is your item.
Yes, this is a um stipulated expulsion agreement uh between the district and our family.
Thank you so much. Student trustees, with this one, you don't have the information because it get, comes in closed session. So that's all the information that's presented, so we are gonna go straight to public, sorry, um, that's the presentation. Is there, are there any public comments on action item E one? No public comment, thank you. Board, are there any questions? Seeing none, we're going to a motion. Is there a motion?
I will move um stipulated expulsion case number two, three, two, four, zero, four, for approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. We're gonna go straight to the vote. Student trustee Pau Carr?
Abstain.
Thank you, student trustee Abdou Kiparbo.
Abstain.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Abstain.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving on to discussion items and reports. The public will have an opportunity to make public comment on each discussion item. After the staff presentation, the time allotted for public comment on each discussion item will be no more than ten minutes and one minute per speaker. Our first discussion item is F one, the International Baccalaureate Program Update, or otherwise known as I B. C A O Johnson and Miss and Dr. Chilcot, this is your item.
Thanks, so um, good evening, President Smith Folds and trustees, um cabinet and community. We have director um Gabriel Chilcot, excuse me, Dr. Gabriel Chilcot and coordinator Dana Devo um to present our International Baccalaureate Program Review.
Thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson, uh President Smith Folds trustees. Um, so as Ms. Neely Johnson mentioned, I'm the program manager for International Baccalaureate. Um, and I'm proud to introduce uh Dana Deble, who coordinates uh the the program between the three schools uh who will be presenting to you tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, C A O Neely Johnson, President Smith Folds, student trustees, area trustees, and colleagues in the district. Um, I will say next slide, we're perfect here, and then I'll just say next. I don't know who's controlling my deck. Uh, the International Baccalaureate is a global leader in international education, developing, inquiring, knowledgeable, confident, and caring young people through four programs in more than a hundred and fifty countries. The West Contra Costa Unified School District proudly became part of that group in two thousand nineteen. My name is Dana Deble. I am a product of this district graduating from Penole Valley High School in nineteen eighty-six. I've been employed by this district since two thousand and one, first as a substitute teacher, then as a Spanish teacher, and most recently as a project assistant liaising between the West Contra Costa Unified School District and the I B. I'm pleased to be here tonight uh to give you an update on the program. Next slide. The International Baccalaureate offers four educational programs that span TK through high school. The primary years program- The primary years program for TK through fifth grade, the middle years program for sixth through tenth grade, and the diploma program and the career program for juniors and seniors in high school. The W C C U S D is currently authorized with one school in each the diploma and primary years program and has three schools in candidacy for the middle years program. Next slide. The primary years program is transdisciplinary inquiry-based program taught through six themes. Who we are, where we are in place and time, how we express ourselves, how the world works, how we organize ourselves and sharing the planet. The West County Mandarin School became an IB candidate school in twenty eighteen and was authorized in the spring of twenty twenty. Next slide, please. The primary years program is a whole school program taught by all teachers to all students. There are currently twenty teachers and three hundred and fifty one students teaching and learning in the P Y P at West County Mandarin School. In February of twenty twenty one, the school board approved a motion for the West County Mandarin School to share a campus with Penole Middle School and introduced the notion of a full K through twelve IB continuum connecting the primary years program already in implementation at West County Mandarin School and the diploma program in implementation at Penole Valley High School with the middle years program. Next slide, please. The middle years program is an interdisciplinary program for students in sixth through tenth grades. It consists of eight subject groups, language acquisition, language and literature, individuals and societies, sciences, mathematics, arts, physical and health education and design. The M Y P expands on the themes introduced in the P Y P and asks students to link their learning to six global contexts. Identities and relationships, personal and cultural expression, orientations and time in space and time, scientific and technical innovation, fairness and development, and globalization and sustainability. It is a whole school program, again, taught by all teachers to all students. Penole Middle School and Penole Valley High School were granted candidacy as partner schools in the spring of twenty twenty two and were joined by West County Mandarin School in the spring of twenty two twenty three, when the board approved its growth to a K eight school. All three schools are currently under consultation with the IB and meet weekly with an IB designee as they move through the required standards and practices. It is important to note that the possible limitation of a six-period schedules in secondary schools as well as the decision not to offer a language other than English at Penole Middle School will disqualify Penole Middle School and Penole Valley High School from authorization and render the three-way partnership invalid. Next slide, please. The diploma program is an internationally recognized college preparatory program for juniors and seniors known for its rigor, depth and breadth. There are two kinds of IB classes, standard level and higher level, and two kinds of IB students, course candidates and diploma candidates. The IB diploma program schools are required to offer at least one course in six areas of study plus the theory of knowledge for diploma candidates. Penole Valley High School currently offers IB language and literature, IB Spanish, IB Mandarin, IB History of the Americas, IB Psychology, IB Biology, IB Computer Science, IB Environmental Systems and Societies, IB Math and IB Visual Art. Penole Valley High High School was authorized as an IB World School in two thousand nineteen, began its first teaching of IB classes in the fall of twenty twenty, completely in the pandemic, and will graduate its third cohort of students later this year. It is up for reauthorization in the fall of twenty twenty five. Next slide, please. This is viewer's choice. Though the D P program is still in its infancy at Penole Valley High School, the IB culture has become embedded in how students think and learn. There is a video here that was created voluntarily and crafted edited by students, but it will add three minutes to this presentation. So I will let you all decide whether to press stop, uh pause or play. Is that a play?
Press play, please.
All right. Uh oh, you're sharing your video, I mean your sound.
IB is a distinct way of approaching creative thinking, which that international.
It helps them become better critical thinkers.
It's good on your cognitive application. So that means you take the most difficult and challenging course and it shows your abilities.
If you don't care about college, they they give like a GPA boost. It's pretty cool.
It helps them work hard, teaches them how to work hard and helps them become a little better of a whole citizen.
It's a nice collaborative learning environment where we're here to work, we'll recover material and enrich ourselves.
People should take IB because it broadens a person's perspective on a role scale and with the support of the teachers, you are just thrown like a lot of information just and it's they really give you the support to fully understand the topics you're reading in that.
I I just feel like it creates a big sense of community between us. Uh, the junior class is a lot larger than the senior class, which is obviously is better.
My favorite part of IB is probably the support system of the teachers because they really care about going in depth with topics and making sure students understand the material we are learning.
They become well-rounded. They become deep thinkers. They build skills in research, communication, organization, self-management.
My favorite part is probably the community in the senior class. Everybody is really close knit. And I just love how everybody can get along with each other. We all do things together outside of the classroom.
And how there's like basically no freshmen in there.
Because history is fun, everybody should want to do uh in-depth history class, please welcome the boy.
Mr. Bedwell, myself, along with Ms. Carlisle, are the three teachers of the IB diploma corps. So any student that's wishing to pursue an IB diploma has to enroll in the theory of knowledge, creativity, activity and service, and the writing of the extended essay.
Mandarin is the most spoken language. And for job opportunities, like if you can speak Mandarin, there's a lot of fun to a better people in China.
I think we have enough fun in this class that it makes the typical work uh look a bit easier.
If you're interested in how the mind works, how we make decisions or emotions, psychology, IB psychology could be a really nice uh course for you to take.
And because IB students love uh.
Okay, next slide.
Okay, next slide.
The IB diploma program at Penole Valley High School is open to any and all juniors or seniors. There are no applications, no admissions requirements and no prerequisites beyond those required by the discipline, such as language one before moving on to language two. There are many ways to IB. Penole Valley High School is building an IB for all program with the intent of raising levels of academic engagement and achievement of all students across disciplines. To that end, all students reaching level three in math or visual art, level four in Mandarin or Spanish, enroll in the IB course for that subject. Juniors in the Engineering Academy take IB Computer Science as part of their academy pathway. Students interested in psychology or environmental systems and societies study that at the IB level. Penole Valley High School has three guiding goals for the program. That seventy percent or more juniors and seniors will enroll in at least one IB class. That ten percent of a graduating class will attempt the full IB diploma and that the demographics of IB courses and sorry, IB course and diploma candidates will match those of the school. Next slide. Students receive messaging about the opportunity to choose IB courses through multiple methods. Counselor presentations to eighth graders, large group presentations for freshmen and sophomores hosted by the diploma program coordinator, that's me. Emails, morning announcements, remind groups, teacher encouragement and family engagement at back-to-school night in open house, IB student panels and one-to-one meetings with counselors and or myself. Working with equal opportunity schools and a targeted outreach list, sixty-three percent of juniors and seniors enrolled in an IB class in the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. The percentage dropped in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three to forty percent, largely due to remediation and credit recovery needed from the pandemic online years. The schools, the current school year, which is shown, sees some recovery at nearly forty-nine percent. Senior numbers from the class of twenty twenty four who spent their freshman year online and are still in recovery are lower than junior numbers. Projected enrollment for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year is at fifty-nine percent based on course requests and power school. Next slide. Both the IB and Penole Valley High School agree with and support the West Contra Costa Unified School District's equity statement that all students can achieve at high levels of proficiency and that the effects of institutionalized racism can be mitigated. We recognize that there is work to be done and are working hard to ensure that support and belonging measures are in place and that any barriers to the program have been or are being mitigated or removed. Full demographics for the last three school years, including race, gender, special education and English language learners have been shared through email. Current demographics are seen on the slide and projected demographics for the twenty four, twenty five school year are forty-six percent Hispanic, eleven percent African American, ten percent white and twenty-nine percent Asian. Projected numbers again are from course requests in Power School. Percentages of sped students in IB courses are roughly nine percent in twenty three, twenty four and English language learners make up six percent of the program. Students pursuing the full IB diploma in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four are also shown on the slide and are predicted to be eleven percent African American, forty percent Hispanic, twenty-five percent Asian and twenty-three percent white in twenty twenty four, twenty five. Diploma candidates in the current school year include three percent sped students but no English language learners. Support and belonging reports from the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year indicated that African American students in IB classes reported lower numbers of feeling like they didn't or wouldn't belong in IB classes and in two to four-year colleges and higher number, and sorry, two and four-year colleges and higher numbers of having at least one trusted adult and one adult they could go to for study support than their non-IB enrolled peers. Additionally, they answered agree or strongly agree to the questions. Students like me are welcome in IB classes, seventy-four percent. Teachers know their students well and are interested in their lives, seventy-three percent. My teacher believes that everyone can learn the subject matter, ninety percent. The IB recently asked, do policy considerations have a benefit for students or do they exist to make things more convenient for adults? That's a conversation that we are continuing to explore in terms of scheduling as we move forward. Next slide. All IB classes are either honors or college-level classes and all students passing those classes with a C or better receive an extra point toward their GPA. IB certificates are awarded to all candidates that register for and complete the end-of-course exams. Acceptable scores vary from state to state and college to college, but generally speaking, a four or better out of seven is considered a credit awardable score. IB diplomas are awarded to candidates that earn a total of twenty-four points uh or more across six subject exams and who complete the three core elements of the theory of knowledge, the writing of an extended essay and the participation in creativity, activity and service. There is an arrangement across all U Cs that candidates earning thirty or better will be granted thirty college credits. The class of twenty twenty two, our first year, had eight candidates that attempted the diploma, five earned it. The class of twenty twenty three had thirteen candidates that attempted the full diploma, eight earned it. There are eleven candidates in the class of twenty twenty four that will find out their diploma results in July and twenty-seven members of the class of twenty twenty five are completing their first year of candidacy just now. The number of diploma candidates who will begin candidacy in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five is unknown at this moment but ranges from twenty-eight who committed on Power School to twenty-nine on my interest list. The unknown factor is dependent on scheduling decisions yet to be made by the district as the IB diploma requires seven classes. The IB, oh, sorry, next slide. Thank you. The IB believes that education should be transformative. Coordinating the program has certainly allowed me to have a much deeper and richer relationship with both students and families than I ever had as a classroom teacher. IB diploma graduates return to campus and report feeling prepared for college as readers, writers, collaborators, contributors and critical thinkers. I thought that I would be able to read some of those testimonials to you, but I can't see them from here, so you can't see them on your screens. Next slide. The GPA boost, college admissions, college credits and scholarships are an obvious benefit for students, but schools and districts benefit from IB as well. Passing scores on IB exams improve the college and career readiness standards on the California State Dashboard. The requirement of four years of study of a language other than English increases the number of students eligible for a California Seal of Biliteracy. If the U, if the W C C U S D chooses to participate in the California Seal of Civic Engagement, IB students would qualify for that as well. And it should be noted that while there are financial commitments necessary to run the program, it is a program that both attracts students to this district and retains students in this district, making it possible for the program to pay for itself. I would encourage the W C C U S D to streamline the inter-district transfer process for this program, to publicize it and to use it for its benefit. Next slide. Also of benefit to the district are elements of the IB program that support the newly released strategic plan. All IB programs, P Y P, M Y P, D P and C P aim for learners to develop the ten attributes listed in the IB learner profile. These align closely with the W C C U S D graduate profile attributes of both twenty twenty two and those recently released in the plan. Next slide. The IB approaches to teaching and learning ensure that educational practices are aligned, that there is cohesive language and that common standards using global best practices are used to assist students in developing the skills that will allow them to succeed in both college and career. This supports the W C C U S D and it's identified six area, key areas of improvement, particularly number one, the alignment of rigorous instructional practices. Its purpose and future vision of providing academic opportunities that are future-focused, preserving our students' ability to thrive as our world and economy continues to change and its vision to be learner-centered community that fosters passion-driven lives. Next slide. IB World Schools must meet the standards and practices at the time of authorization and are reevaluated every five years. By monitoring our purpose, environment, culture and learning through the IB lens, we contribute to the W C C U S D mission to empower learners with the knowledge and skills necessary to choose their own pathways and follow their passions with courage and confidence. Last slide. In closing, I would like to acknowledge that the IB and its programs are complex to understand. I was asked to present an informational update and hope that I've highlighted program strengths and areas of growth well. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to also say that all three of the schools currently authorized to teach or in candidacy for an IB program are feeling some anxiety with all of the unknowns at the moment. We all know that there are impending budget cuts, but we need surety on our campuses that the basic needs to run this program, these programs are being supported. These includes a coordinator for each program, teacher trainings and collaboration, the teaching of a world language in middle schools and at the high school level, a seventh period. Counselors at Penole Valley High School are not scheduling students into the full diploma program at the moment because they do not know if the school will be supported with the seventh class. I would like to highlight key area of improvement number four from the strategic plan that reads in part to fund schools and schedules to support equity in student achievement for all. And I ask that I leave this presentation with renewed support for the IB program in the form of the funding and scheduling that it needs. Thank you for your time this evening and thank you advance in advance for your continued support.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We're gonna move to public comment. Are there any public comments?
Yes, our first public comment is Jenny De Luna. Hi, good evening. I'm Jenny De Lumo. I'm a Richmond resident. I'm also the mother of a kindergartner at West County Mandarin School. And I'm here to voice my whole family's support for the district's IB programs. It's integral to West County's program and it's key to student success. Not just in support of dual learn, language learning, but because not just in support of dual language learning, but because it fosters critical thinking, social emotional awareness, and it teaches students to be good citizens of this ethnically and culturally diverse district that we live in and the world beyond it. IB is and can be inclusive when it's part of a school's mission and a core tenet of their curriculum, as it is at West County. My son is engaged, he's supported, he's nurtured, and I know this because he's excited to go to school. He asks me challenging questions, they're thoughtful questions. And it would be detrimental to remove the district's IB programs. And rather, we should strive to provide this opportunity for all schools and all students who want it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, I'd be interested to know if the company or the people that are promoting this program are a for-profit or a nonprofit? And are they providing any funds or in-service training free to the district? I can see that this could be a very expensive program. And as someone said, it would be important to have continuation of the program and not on a one, two-year, and then, ah gee, we have to cut it. So that would be a problem. I'd also be interested to know how is, are these classes different from AP classes that are offered at most of our high schools as well? So, thank you.
Next public comment is Tamina Sharif.
My name is Tamina Sharif of West County Mandarin School. As an African American student, I love the IB program because it gives me an opportunity to learn about the world and different cultures. IB made learning fun for me and has improved my writing and critical thinking skills. I hope all of you can continue to support the IB program and let more children have the same chance as me to excel in my learning.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. That IB is perfect for the Swahili school, so y'all have to become a destination district. So we have to do things like this to increase our enrollment. So with the Swahili school, we could just, this is so lovely. And you know this budget issue is causing everybody to come out and show all the wonderful things our district really offers. And my daughter is, she's, Pinot High School is her home school. So this is very good to hear. I just would like to hear more about if you have a child with special needs, how, how do they fit in if they want to participate in something like this? But I think it's really good, and like all the other speakers said, some of those questions, is it private? How is it funded? And we do need to keep it in the district because our district does not do well with Black and African American children. So we need things like this so we can excel and have access to resources like this. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Odessa Cooper Lagardi.
And I am the proud mother of a fourth grader at West County Mandarin School and a member of the school's AIPAC community. I understand that there is consideration of eliminating IB funding, in part for fiscal reasons, but also because the program is perceived to be exclusionary to Black students. I recognize the concern about equity, but eliminating IB programs in this district is not the solution. It sends the wrong message to Black families, implying that lowering expectations is an acceptable option for the pursuit of equity. Maintaining the IB programs is crucial for cultivating a diverse pipeline of students who can succeed in higher-level education and beyond. It's about giving Black students the experience, confidence, and skills to thrive in this world. And it's also about ensuring that all students, regardless of background, have access to the curriculum that reflects their culture and prepares them to be global citizens. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maurice Creighton.
Hello, my name is Maurice Creighton. I am a parent of two daughters, African American daughters, one in kindergarten, one fifth grade. And I'm here on behalf of my family to ask for your continued support of the IB program, as I believe in what it has done and will do for our students. IB programs teach students to be critical thinkers, excellent communicators, open-minded risk-takers, principled, reflective, knowledgeable, and more culturally aware. I want our children to have an international education. To me, it simply means just looking at, thinking critically about, and connect local and global issues and successes. I think that having the opportunity to learn from and practice with each other in more than one language provides a grand stage for academic and personal growth. I ask that we continue to build and not destroy. I ask that as leaders, we continue to remove obstacles and figure out ways to duplicate successes. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Erica Ipanaki.
Good night, everyone. I'm a parent from West County Mandarin School. I have two kids. My son is in fourth grade and my daughter is in sixth grade. As a Hispanic-speaking parent, having access to the International Baccalaureate Program in the public school system is so hard to come. But definitely, I feel very fortunate. The IB program is the reason why my children are thriving in West County Mandarin and not in any other public schools or charter school. My children love learning, ask great questions, they're caring and compassionate. They feel safe and understood in their school community, and that is because of the IB program and its philosophy. This type of experience is impossible to come by in a traditional setting. My children have experienced different cultures and learned a third language, even when, when we do not travel out. The IB program should be made available to all schools and children. Thank you.
And our last public comment is Eric Peterson.
West County Mandarin School was approved by the district to become an IB school in two thousand eighteen. That was less than a year after West County Mandarin opened. For almost the school's entire existence, it's been implementing the IB program either in candidacy or as a fully authorized school. The IB and Mandarin learning are not separate programs at our school. Rather, Mandarin learning is one inseparable part of our greater IB program. Learning a second language is a requirement for being an IB school. It should be noted that the IB budget for West County Mandarin pays for an IB coordinator that handles curriculum and Mandarin and other sub, other subjects and languages, assessment, and professional development tasks that the central office normally provides for its English-only and Spanish-dealing schools. The IB program also reduces the district's textbook budget for our school. The West County Mandarin community is grateful to the board for approving West County Mandarin to be a K-8 school last year. Families were excited that becoming a K-8 school would enable them to continue the IB Mandarin immersion program through eighth grade. West County Mandarin School is already implementing the IB Middle Years Program in candidacy and is hoping to submit for full authorization next year for its IB middle school program. While I hope it's not the case, if Pinot Valley High or Pinot Middle School were not able to continue with the NYPD candidacy, West County Mandarin would still be committed to achieve the IB authorizations for its Middle Years Program through an alternate route. But again, we, we hope that all three can go ahead and do this together. We're stronger together. So thank you for your continued support. We hope for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your comments. We are now moving on to questions. Board, we're going to do three questions and two-minute comments. Does anyone have questions? Trustee Reckler, you have questions? Go ahead, trustee Reckler. Three questions and two-minute comments.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being here so late. I want to come, I want to cut right to the chase. Can you very succinctly tell me what you think is in jeopardy and how much money you're looking at across all programs?
Was it specifically what we think is in, what I think is in jeopardy?
Yes, what's in jeopardy with the IB program all the way?
Pinot Valley High School has traditionally run a six-period day with an optional seventh, and it has been rumored among the, the cuts of the district that secondary schools will only be allowed to offer six periods. And so in, in cutting that and not having the seventh period required for the full IB diploma program, we would not be renewed at authorization. So the entire cost of the program is about for all, for the IB diploma program at the high school or all three programs?
Well, what I'm most concerned about is what's in jeopardy.
Oh.
So in terms of, I mean, if we are going to talk about the cost of the program, we would want to gather that and come back with more exact numbers. And I also will give a similar answer to, she's speaking about the need for, or the possible need for another class. And I couldn't give you a sum as to what it would cost to be able to run that program at Pinot Valley High School, but I could tell you that it would be an extra expense on top of the existing IB budget.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll save that for comments. I think Ms. Burkhardt called in with a really good question. What's the difference between AP and IB?
Couple of things. The IB offers two levels of classes and the AP offers one. So IB classes are either standard level, which are one-year classes, or higher level, which are two-year-long classes. IB tends to go for more breadth of knowledge and looks under, looks for concepts, you know, as opposed to memorizing, for example, dates and names and people that were in wars. It would be what was happening in the world when this war began, and how do we prevent it from happening again in some other place in the world? IB students will take exams, offer a standard level course at the end of course. So it could be at the end of junior year or at the end of senior year or both. They take two different level, standard level classes. Higher-level classes take exams at the end of a two-year period. And AP classes are standalone classes, and the IB program aims to offer a continuum of programs that kids can earn a diploma from.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. And then I have comments.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Phillips, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Very early on in your presentation, you said, and I'm paraphrasing, you said something would disqualify us. And I didn't hear what the something was, and I started doing like this, and I was like, it's not time to ask questions. Can you restate that?
Yes. It has been rumored that there will be no language other than English offered at Pinot Middle School. And the Middle Years Program requires a language. And so if we're not offering LOTEs at Pinot Middle next year, that will disqualify them. If Pinot Valley High School cannot offer the full diploma program, which requires seven classes in either junior or senior year, that will disqualify Pinot Valley as well.
What? If you want to get an IB diploma, what year? Freshman, sophomore, junior, what year do you officially have to start working towards that?
The program is only open to juniors and seniors, and so you don't start your IB classes until junior year. But I try to start working with students their freshman year to plan a full four-years pathway through Pinot Valley High School, especially because they operate on a six-period day, which is only the opportunity for two hundred and forty credits of the two twenty-five needed. So we've got to plan everything very carefully to make sure things fit the last two years.
You said that you would like the district to streamline the transfer process into, presumably, Pinot Valley High for IB. Can you speak to the demand that you're seeing? Are there wait lists? Can you just talk about what the demand is?
I, to some extent, I can, but only to the extent that they come to me before going to the transfer office. So there hasn't been a really clear communication between the transfer office and the school in terms of programs. But I hear, I get contacts from, just the other day, I got a contact from a family from Nevada who is moving to the Bay Area and looking to transfer for an IB program. I got a contact from a family that's living out of the country that is from this area and is looking to move back. So the demand is out there, and where I think that we could do better is attracting students from very close neighboring districts that are looking for something more for their students as well.
You want to steal kids? I'm just joking. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Any other board member have a question? Trustee Palcar?
I have a comment.
Okay, hold on one second for comments. Any other questions? Trustee Christian?
Yes. Yes, I just wanted to ask a question as far as how would you, you know, like, advertise or bring in, I mean, what, what method would you use?
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see all of our district website updated a little bit. There's, we don't have any IB information on the district website, and although the IB is housed at Pinot Valley High School for its diploma program, we do consider it a program for the district. We consider Pinot Valley High School the IB hub for the district. So I would like to see district putting out information. I would like to be hosting Zoom meetings in the evenings for families that are interested. I would like it to go out on parent squares. And student panels, I think, are actually the most effective ways. Kids talk to kids.
Okay, and then, I guess, just that, would you consider like, like Facebook, Instagram, you know, in those areas?
Absolutely.
Or even TV advertise?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Phillips, is it a question you have?
No, I'm ready for comments.
Oh, okay. Just one second. Question or comment? Question? Go ahead.
If I may, so I asked what was in jeopardy, and you told me it was the high school. But hearing you answer, it's also the middle school because there's not a language program, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much. I just have one clarifying question and then one question around strategies. The first clarifying question is, once they, once a school goes through the process and their application is approved, and pardon if these are not the correct terms, I can't remember the slide exactly. But once they go through the application process and a school is approved, approved through that process, does the implementation start the very next year, or does the implementation start inside the year that they're approved? So if they're approved in May, does the implication, the implementation of it start in May, or does it wait to the following school year?
It depends on the program. The, the NYPD- It depends on the program. The the NYPD program, the middle years program, asks that schools start a trial implementation immediately upon candidacy. And so as soon as, well, as soon as teachers have their trainings, they write subject plans and they go to work in their classroom in trial implementations. In the diploma program, implementation would begin the fall after approval, after authorization. Because they require, all the classes require either 150 hours or 240 hours of curriculum. So it'd be impossible to start in the middle of the year.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
My second question is about, and I think trustee Christian hit on this, so if it's a repeat, forgive me. Your, what are the specific recruitment strategies that you have for not only kids entering the IB for all, but completing the program all the way through diploma? So what are the recruitment and support strategies that you have in place? For context, let's say that 15 students enter IB for all, but you want all 15 to hopefully go for the diploma track and or the IB diploma and to stay in the IB program. So what strategies do you have in place to not only recruit more students in, but then to support them all the way through the program to receiving the diploma?
Recruitment generally happens at any phase in, in a kid's four years of school. The earlier the better. Um, and that really involves creating a four-year plan that maps out everything that they want to do in their four years, which may include an IB course in their area of strength and interest, pursuing the full diploma program, being part of an academy, and an IB, taking band, so on and so forth. I, I have created a Google document that any kid that comes to my informational meetings, and they come to those through invitations in, over the loudspeaker, or once they've checked an interest box, I have their emails and I send out email blasts. And I hold, um, weekly informational meetings for freshmen and sophomores during our collaboration time, during Pinole Valley High School's collaboration time. And those students actually own their own documents, but I walk them through high school graduation requirements, A through G requirements, and now junior year, here are your choices. IB, English, English III, so on and so forth, down all the subject groups. And so I monitor those along with their counselors throughout their whole years. To stay in classes, you know, one, one, two, three IB classes, um, are not difficult, but the full IB program is a heavy lift between sophomore year and junior year. Um, kids are going from taking zero honors classes, or maybe one if they're an academy student, having four or five honors classes. And so we need to do a lot of monitoring on time management, on mental health, on emotional health. And we're, we're talking about different strategies like subject group one, which happens to be English, you know, can you do all of your tests only on Mondays? Subject group two, can you do your tests on the second days of the week? How can we balance out timelines and help students do their, their self-management?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Board, we are now moving to comments. If we could get a two-minute timer on. Yes, sir.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, these rumors that are floating around, and there's three that I heard. Um, one is about the period for the high school. Um, the other one that I heard is the language for the middle school. And I can't remember what the one was for the eleme, well, I guess two. Who said these things? Like, where did you hear this? Like, who said it? And I mean, like, who with authority said any of this? I mean, because we're talking around stuff, so who said it?
Um, so the two that we're talking about for the secondary schools, um, this is more FTE-related. And so, um, I don't know that I would use the term rumor, but it is the idea that, uh, the number of FTE that are needed to build an effective program, um, is in question as to whether that can lead to the world language at middle school, um, and the needed courses in the junior and senior year in order to, um, get the IB diploma. So specifically, that's where where those are coming from. In terms of Mandarin-
Said it.
I'm sorry?
You're not answering my question. Who said it?
Well, it's not a said, it's a, an allotment of FTEs that are not sufficient as per the administration at those sites to be able to build out the program in support of the, of the needed just number of courses. I'm not trying to avoid the question, like, I mean, maybe somebody's saying it. I'm just telling you, like, it's on paper with the number of FTEs is the, the assertion that's being made. And then for the elementary? Oh, we don't feel free.
We have, we can run the FT, Pinole Valley High School can run the program with the FTE allotment it's been given, but it can't run the program within a six-period day. And administration there has been told that they would not be able to offer an optional A period any longer.
Okay.
That's true. Yep. Sorry, I did misstate that in the way that's a much better representation of high school. And then, um, I couldn't speak to the elementary in terms of just the, the rumor of who.
Can somebody speak to the elementary?
Rumor coming from that you may be defunded.
There's, I know that there's a lot of deliberation happening at the district level about, you know, some, some, uh, budget decisions that have to be made. I'm sorry. I, I know that there are some, um, uh, decisions that are having to be made, you know, by the district with the board about, you know, some tough decisions about budgets right now. We, we all know that. And so, um, I think there's, there's been some conversation, you hear it just through, you know, through different channels that, you know, many things are on the table, including the IB.
Vista Peterson, who did you hear it from?
I, uh, you know, I've heard people say that they think that maybe it shouldn't exist. I, I'm just not comfortable saying, saying that. The name of the person, uh, or people here in this forum, sir.
Whenever you're ready for comments.
I'll defer to people above me to maybe say that.
Thank you so much. Before we go to comments, I see CBO Moses, you would like to speak to something, please?
Sure. Um, good afternoon, good evening, board. I just wanted to address some of the issues as it relates to staffing and funding and, and the, the IB program, but I want to preface this by saying, any program that brings, um, additional learning opportunities for our students is a great program. So this isn't about the program. However, um, what's being discussed are the issues around the budget and the impact of where we are with our budget. Based upon the spreadsheets that I have, the IB program, uh, this year costs $601,165, but that only covered the assessments, the curriculum, the fees associated with the program, the cost of professional development, and the cost of the coordinators. The program currently has 2.5 FTE coordinators at the expense of about $300,000, which is about half of the cost of the program. The conversation we're having about staffing schools, the reality is when you run a special program, you need additional FTE in many cases, not in every case, but in many cases. And so the FTE that we've allotted to schools matches their enrollment and is enough FTE to run a quality program for students. However, special programs typically require additional staffing, or in the case of, um, some of our high schools' additional time. Now, as it relates to the six-period day, we have not given high schools the direction that they cannot have a seven-period day. The direction that we've given to high schools and to labored is that if they can be creative and create a seven-period day without a fiscal impact, we welcome that. For example, El Cerrito is able to do it with her block schedule. So there are creative avenues to build these schedules for students. The real issue, I believe, is that they also take extra teachers in addition to the $600,000 we already have allocated to the program. So we did not allocate additional FTE for special programs, and we're having conversations with principals individually and taking those to cabinet. Um, but the reality is any FTE we add, we have to find a way to, uh, balance that in the way of other reductions, um, due to our fiscal situation. Um, so we're trying to be creative. The reality is, it is a program that, uh, is costly. However, it's also a valued program, so we're hopeful that we can be creative and find some solutions to continue it.
Thank you so very much. Board, we're going to go to two-minute comments. Thank you so much. Board, we're going to start with student trustees. So student trustees, if you have comments about, um, this agenda topic, and we are again talking about international baccalaureate. Go ahead, please.
Um, okay, uh, so I do have, I do have stuff to say about this. So, um, when I was first entering high school, I really, 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 and I emphasize really wanted to pursue an IB, um, get an IB, like, degree, um, diploma, what they call it, but my school didn't offer it. And so I did explore the chance of possibly going and taking courses at Pinole Valley, just because this is something that was so important to me because I knew that it held a lot of weight when you're applying to college. I mean, it's something that's so rigorous and it's just really prestigious diploma to hold and to have on your common app. And that was really important to me. But my school didn't have it, and I just, this is really, I think, personally, because it holds so much weight to me, if this funding is restricted, this is possibly the most, like, disheartening thing that we could have, that we could do for this district. I mean, curriculum is just so important. Sending, sending students to these prestigious universities really elevates our status as a, as a school district. And we should not be taking away funding from something that is already just, like, extending students' realm of possibilities. It's just, it's something that does not make much sense to me, but, um, I also think that it's so important to provide these underrepresented students of color, students of low income with this opportunity because it's something that the, the privileged school districts have. And it's, it leads to the systemic issue of those kids getting in to, to better universities and then getting higher-paying jobs and just contributes to this socioeconomic gap that we have. And it's just so, so, so important that we keep this and that we keep the funding and that we expand it too, because I'm sure a lot of kids don't know what it is, but they would love to take it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Palcar. Trustee Ebde Kaparvo, do you have a comment? Thank you so much. Trustee Phillips, you have a comment? And then we'll just work our way back around. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
So earlier I talked about the Mandarin School and Vista Virtual as examples of good programming that's working. I consider IB to be another example of that. And so I am making a general statement of support in the same way that I made a statement regarding Vista and Mandarin. If the district is doing something good that's working, like the gentleman, Mr. Crichton, said earlier, continue to build and not destroy. But I feel also like something else is going on right now, and I feel like we're having two conversations at one time. I feel like we're having a conversation about IB, but I also feel like we're having a conversation about Pinole Valley High School, and I kind of feel like we're having a conversation about Kibbie Kleiman, to be honest with you. I feel like all of that is wrapped up in this one conversation and that there's a lot of subtext. And so I want to be very careful about what I say right now, and I think the board should be as well. My suggestion is that we actually have a special meeting to talk about IB and Pinole Valley High School. And I understand that there are some issues concerning the middle school, uh, and the West County Mandarin School. And I think that those should be included. I think it should be a very in-depth conversation. I think the things that these individuals have said tonight, uh, at the podium should be specifically addressed by administration as well. But I think that's where this conversation needs to go.
Thank you so much for your comment, trustee Phillips. Trustee Christian?
Yes, and I just want to echo the same thing, um, here with, uh, trustee Phillips is saying, and, um, and I just want to echo the same thing, you know, you know, these are vehicles to help our young people to proceed on in, in, in the future. And really, I just look at it, you know, really, if our whole district was to, uh, really step to the plate to really make things happen for our students, because you preparing them to go to college or either trade or somewhere. But if we, you know, don't look at it that way, or and it's, it's about monies, we just need to look at how we can get more monies in here. You know, we need to, you know, knock on the door of our state senators and congressmen and, and Tony Thurman and so forth, many other people. But, you know, our, you know, it's, 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 I would like to see this happen too, is where if a student attends one school, like Kennedy, see an opportunity to take something over there, to be able to go over there and take that course and still be a Kennedy student. We did it back in the day in the eighties. And it happened here in this district. You got to go back and look at the history. History is important because it, it, it showed that, you know, these things happen where, uh, students were able to go to different schools to get different, um, lessons, you know, and, and then go back to their school side. So it's a lot that we need to do. We got to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. Trustee Reckler?
Okay, thank you. I want to thank you too for the presentation. I want to thank Dr. Peterson for his tireless advocacy, for his Mandarin School and for the IB program. He is just amazing. I couldn't say more about this program. This is exactly what our kids want, and this is what they're asking for. Thoughtful, rigorous, contemplative, critical thinking, collaborative, interdisciplinary. This is going to prepare them for the future, and we absolutely need to have this program. Once again, here it is a first. We have a Mandarin IB program. Nobody else has that that I know. We're certainly first. We might be the only. These are the kinds of things that people want. These are the programs that have waitlists. These are the schools that have waitlists. This is the way education is moving. And tonight was a very difficult meeting because all the bright lights, the online program, regardless of what the results are, people are asking for it, DLI, IB, all of these things are hanging by a thread. And this is where the major investments need to go, uh, to, to keep the district alive, but to educate kids. This is what they need to succeed in the future. So I don't want to see this program removed. And you're right, we need to have very serious discussion about what we're doing with all of these so that these gems survive and thrive. The other thing is that I really want to understand the budget. So when you said that you were going to come back with it, a lot of times you guys say you're going to come back with it and you get busy, and I understand that. But I really want to understand the money and what it's going to take to fund this and the people that you need to keep this program going. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. CBO Moses, did you need to say or want to say something else?
I just wanted to be clear on behalf of Dr. Hurst, who isn't in attendance tonight, that he has not, um, given any direction to reduce what we've been doing for IB or DLI. And so we haven't made any cuts to these programs. However, the programs are asking for more, and we also haven't made any increases. So I think the follow-up with evaluating these programs and what's needed to continue to have them to thrive, um, has to start there. has to start there. And I just wanted to be very clear that as we made fiscal cuts, these programs were not touched.
Thank you so much, CBO Moses. I think for my comments, first, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to Mandarin School. Thank you to Pinole Valley Middle School, if you're here, or I'm sorry, Pinole Middle School, and thank you to Pinole Valley High School. I think that one of the things that I want to see when we're talking about programs that increase students' viability outside of high school is that we talk about how do we ensure that that's reaching more students, all students, students where the numbers are so high, right? So if there's a, a school that has 700 kids, 699 of them are in by this program because it increases the viability of their future. So when we're talking about programs, I would like us to start centering ourselves of how do we increase the attractiveness and the resources of the program to include more of our students than not, right? So how do we continue to remove barriers, increase strategies, increase recruitment, and then decrease retention when they're in those programs? Because it's one thing to get in a program, it's another thing to complete the program. We see that in our AP classes. Students take AP classes, but they don't take the exam. We see that in some of our IB classes. Students get into the IB classes, but they don't complete it to diploma. We see it at elementary schools. Some elementary schools that have D, uh, DLI, they'll come in, but then they don't have, parents don't have the resources to feel comfortable to keep their kid in it because parents need to be educated also, right? So how do we get those strategies in place and keep those strategies in place to help our entire district thrive inside of these programs that benefit? Because we cannot say that they don't benefit, but how do they benefit more? I think that's the question that we need to lean on. How do we do it for more students? Um, thank you very much again for your time. Thank you to the audience members that stayed so late. We really appreciate it. Thank you to the administrators that we know you have to go back to school very early in the morning. We appreciate it. Thank you. We are complete. Board, we have 15 minutes to get through Mr. Freeze's presentation. Mr. Freeze, I hate to rush you, but I'm going to rush you. Um, we're going to get through your presentation. Uh-oh, hold on, Mr. Freeze. Yes, Mr. Phillips?
Is it possible, um, to do this presentation, to save this presentation? So we can do the stuff that's still on the, that got pulled off consent and maybe have a minute for, for Board comment?
Mr. Freeze, is there a time constraint on your, uh, presentation?
Tonight, we do have Lady Counselor here with us to make a presentation to the board. Um, we were hoping to present tonight and be able to bring back a resolution in the next board meeting.
Is it a have to or is it a hope to?
If it had to roll, it could roll.
Oh, the dude is here in the back? All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Freeze, could you just repeat what you said? I couldn't hear you.
I said it had to move, uh, one week, or it could move to the next agenda if it had to.
Mr. Freeze, how fast could you do it? Not that fast.
Mr. Henderson said he could speak fast.
Mr. Henderson, you can speak fast, like five minutes fast?
If you make sure he's advanced so he can bring up his presentation.
Point, point of order though. My, my issue with this is that this is listed as a discussion item. Then it's not listed as an item to give direction or to vote to authorize resolution. So he's the lawyer. Maybe he's familiar with the Brown Act, but preliminary procedure.
We tick, tick, ticking on the clock, guys. Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
If we're just taking it in for information, we could do it in five minutes. But if it's, if we're actually going to ask questions and discuss, I don't see how we can do that in five minutes.
Can we take in the information and then can you come back on Zoom if we have further questions to ask you?
He can come back on Zoom.
Great. Five minutes, Mr. What's his, uh, Mr. Freeze, what's his name?
Mr. Henderson.
Mr. Henderson, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for staying late. We really appreciate it. Give it to us quick. And then if we have questions or concerns, we'll definitely bring you back. Go ahead, please.
Um, did you want me to share my screen? Uh, there we go. Got it. Okay, I will speak very quickly and try to keep this at a very, uh, quick clip. We're going to talk about lease, leaseback, which is a construction project delivery method. Um, I know there will likely be questions, and like we said, we can, we can, if you'd like, hold those questions for the next time we get together. There are three basic options for constructing large construction for K-12 school districts. That's design bid build, that's formal bidding, normal stuff, design build, which you have done before, and lease, leaseback. We're just going to be talking about lease, leaseback tonight. For the visual learners, I'm one of those, this is design bid build. District has an agreement with an architect, hires a contractor, and there's subcontractors underneath. Remember that image for a moment. You've done design build before. In that case, we hire one entity who's a design build entity, and they have subconsultants and subcontractors underneath them. That's not what we're talking about tonight. Tonight, we're talking about lease, leaseback. This picture looks remarkably like the other picture. We're hiring a contractor who has subcontractors underneath them. The difference in lease, leaseback and design bid build is that we get to use not just a formal low bidder, but a competitive solicitation process. We get to evaluate contractors based on their past experience, their ability to do large projects, other factors besides just price. We get to evaluate experience as well. Now, there is competition, and the board adopts criteria, et cetera, which is what we're talking about doing at the next board meeting. And subcontractors also must be formally bid by the contractor at that time. So there is injected competition into the process. It's not formal bidding, but there is competition. And frankly, we inject even more competition than the statute requires. And there must be advertising in the newspaper, just like a formal bid. So how this normally happens, which would be happening presumably in the next few weeks if the board wants to consider it, the board would take action to adopt criteria. Then this district staff would issue requests for qualifications or requests for proposals. And, and by the way, your local, um, capacity program would be part of that. Your PLA would be part of that. That solicitation goes out, there's an ad in the paper, um, and there's pre-qualification requirements, just like the bidding process in this. The district staff receives all those, uh, proposals, uh, SOQs, statements of qualifications, and evaluates them. The criteria that we use to evaluate those is very important. I would spend time, more time on the slide if I could. Price is still our number one factor. We ask all kinds of pricing factors. We ask what the markup is. We ask what their general conditions are. We ask almost every pricing we can. The only thing we can ask, because design isn't done, is what are your subcontractor prices? Everything else we ask for in this initial solicitation. Then ultimately, the district staff would come to you with their recommended, and the board would act to, um, hire that particular contractor. And because this is during design, you enter into a preliminary services agreement. And that contractor then works with your architect through design to hopefully, and this is the whole, one of the main points of lease, leaseback, to find cost-saving and other best value factors that come into the construction process. That's the reason why boards consider this. Again, they enter into those pre-construction services and work with the, with the architect throughout design. And when there's a final price, as I said a few minutes ago, an ad is put into the paper. That contractor must advertise and solicit subcontractors. They don't get to pick and choose who they get. Subcontractors would, just like they do on the formal bid process, have to bid to that contractor. And those, the district staff works with the, with the contractor to evaluate those bids, and those bids are selected. And then ultimately, the lease, leaseback contract is awarded by this board. I was going to spend a few minutes talking about the structure of lease, leaseback. Why am I calling it a lease, leaseback? U N S, it's a best value selection process. It's been around for decades. You in essence lease the property to the contractor, they build something and lease it back to you. You still use all your funds. You're using bond funds for it. Um, it's just one of the statutory processes. It's a little bit silly, but it's the process that's in the statute to do this best value selection. There have been challenges for lease, leaseback over a decade ago, and they were based on a validation action. I'm not going to dive into that tonight. We don't have time for that. Suffice it to say that all the cases, uh, that came were for the district except for one. In that one case, it was called Davis versus Fresno, the court found that there must be some financing and a genuine lease. All the lease, leasebacks we've put together now, even though it's just a case, have true lease factors and have a small component of financing. Consider yourself maybe financing the final 5% of the contract. That's a common structure for this. And you in essence enter into a lease with the contractor to lease it back, and you, uh, get the, uh, facility during that time. I will have to explain that in probably more detail at the time. Um, there was subsequent decisions by the Supreme Court. I won't dive into it. It was, in my view, irrelevant to whether or not lease, leaseback is valid. The statute was rewritten in 2017. It has all kinds of factors. Your school district board members, you might have written, seen some stories about lease, leaseback written by some people that I think have got it wrong. So the bottom line is at this point, we do lease, leaseback probably 50% of our districts. If the board wants to select it, we're somewhat agnostic about it, but it's a tool that could be used to get a best value selection. I'm going to stop now. I've got my FAQs on the screen. If you have questions, great. If not, we're going to do questions later, earlier in the next evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Henderson. You, uh, did well. It was five minutes. Um, thank you so much. We're now moving to consent items, and we will have you back. Thank you so
Thank you.
On Zoom, but we will have you back. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to the poll consent items. Trustee Reckler, if you could do it a minute apiece, it'd be great. We're moving to consent item C8. You approve, approval of fundraising activities. You pulled this one. Go ahead.
I did. It'll take me one second. I want the chance to vote no because not everything is aligned, nothing, some things don't have full dates on them. And, um, I'm, I'm not going to personally approve that, and that's, that's the end of my statement.
Okay, so is there a motion for approval of fundraising activities? I'll move the approval of fundraising activities. Is there a second?
Can I make a suggestion? Um, I actually said to myself that I was going to abstain on all the consent items tonight, which means that this will fail. So is it possible for this to just come back with the information that Trustee Reckler is talking about so it actually passes?
CBO Moses, is there information that's lacking in the fundraising activities?
I reviewed the backup and I reviewed the summary sheet. I did see some discrepancies with a couple of dates in the naming of a couple of the activity sponsors. In particular, the one that I think we had the most issue with is El Cerrito's multicultural night celebration. They did not name what they were selling. But with the exception of that one, I believe that the rest of them are, um, issues of, um, the way in which they're written in this document, which I will address with staff.
Thank you so much, Trustee Phillips.
So is it okay if I, if I just move to table this so it could come back and, and the stuff doesn't fail? That's what I would like to do.
Yes, sir. Hold on one second. Trustee Reckler was the, was what trustee, sorry, trustee Reckler, was what CBO Moses said satisfactory to you to be able to move it forward or no?
Nope.
Because it would fail? CBO Moses, we're going to motion to table?
I, I moved to table this agenda item.
Is there a second? Sorry, go ahead, CBO Moses.
I just want to make it absolutely clear that every one of these fundraisers as proposed by West County Mandarin, Richmond High, Pinole, Hercules High, El Cerrito High, Deansa High, and Valley View, we will need to call all of those sites and tell them to halt all of these activities, and they will not go forward if there is no approval tonight. Um, if you choose not to approve, we're happy to notify schools, but I just wanted the board to understand that tabling this means that none of these activities will go forward, and most of them start, um, pretty soon.
Thank you so much for that. Trustee Christian?
Yeah, based on the fundraiser, these students need their fundraising so they can do things. April is over. We about to march into May. Time is moving. The students need their stuff.
We've got two minutes. So this is what we're going to do. There was a motion on the floor. I've, I had a motion to move the fun, the approval of the fundraising activities. Are you putting a second motion on the floor, Trustee Chris, or Trustee Phillips?
I was just trying to help.
I know. Are you putting, I know, sir. Are you going to put a second motion on the floor?
I moved that we tabled the item.
Is there a, is there a second to Trustee Phillips tabling the item?
I'll second it.
You're seconding that motion, and I did
Put another motion on the floor. Are people willing to approve the fundraisers that are compliant?
I, yes.
Trustee Reckler, and your motion is to approve the fundraisers that are compliant?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, so you second that, you seconded that?
You should list the
The fundraisers that are compliant. What fundraisers are you speaking of?
Okay, so I'll list the ones that are not. How's that? Deansa High School, selling snacks, current to six, seven, 24. I don't know what current is. El Cerrito High School, four, 22. That started two days ago. Hercules started today. I'll let that one slide. Pinole Valley High School, coffee and tea service every Friday. Richmond High School, March to September. That goes into the next school here.
So those are the ones that I would pull. Ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, it is now 11:30. Um, we can only extend one time, and we have reached that time limit. We are now moving to adjournment. We are now adjourning the meeting at 11:30.